Good morning. It's great to see everybody here this morning on a rainy day, but it's another great day here in Manatee County. We're getting some much-needed rain today. I'd like to call to order the Board of County Commissioners meeting for January 9th, 2024. And as we do with every meeting, we start with recognizing our God and pledging allegiance to our country. So with that, I'd like to call up Pastor Randy Wilkins from Gulf Coast Church. And after that, the pledge will be led by our very own Renee Manina. She is the Director of our Community, our Veteran Services, and a Coast Guard Veteran. So if you can stand at this time, please do for the invocation and the pledge. Thank you.
Heavenly Father, we come before you with humble hearts, recognizing your sovereignty over all aspects of our lives. As we gather in this County Board of Commissioners meeting, we lift up our community to your care. Lord, we're aware of the upcoming flood. We pray for protection of our citizens, that we would be willing and ready and able to be able to help if that call would come. May your love and compassion inspire the actions taken during this meeting, fostering unity and understanding among these leaders. Lord, grant them the strength to address the challenges with grace and humility, always seeking justice and fairness for all. As we embark on the proceedings of this gathering, we entrust our deliberations into your hands, recognizing that apart from you, we can do nothing. May your light shine upon us, illuminating the path of righteousness and injustice. It's in Jesus' name that we pray. Amen.
Good morning. Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you both very much, and thank you for your service and service to our community. Mr. Administrator, are there announcements or changes to the agenda?
The Agenda Update Memorandum has been added to the online agenda.
All right. Thank you, sir. Are there any, is there anything that the Commissioners would like to have pulled from the consent agenda this morning? All right. Thank you very much. What I'd like to do is just take a moment of chair privilege here and ask Commissioner Van Austinbridge if he can join me, standing right here, for a minute. Yes, I am quitting. What we'd like to do is, as we know, Commissioner Van Austinbridge served as Chair for two years as the Board of County Commissioners Chairman, and, you know, kept the trains on time, kept us on a forward motion through some very tough times and difficult times. And what I wanted to do this morning is to say thank you very much, and on behalf of the citizens, the employees of Manatee County, and the Board of County Commissioners, I'd like to recognize you with this plaque for your service as Chair of the County Commission.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. All right. Thank you. You can hang that on your wall. What I'd like to do right now is move forward with our awards, presentations, and proclamations. This morning, we're going to do a presentation of Heroism Award to one of our very own David Saldarva, and present him with the award for heroism. And Jody, you bringing that forward?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. And Public Safety Director Jody Fisk will make the presentation.
Good morning, Jody Fisk, Director of Public Safety. I'm actually, at this time, going to go ahead and ask all of our Code Enforcement Officers who came, and David in particular, to go ahead and step forward. And I'm going to say nice things about David and embarrass him. I'm going to let Lieutenant Tom Wooton give the details specific to the award. I think it's important to note that David has this really uncanny ability that as soon as you say the words, "We really need to get something done," he's already doing it. And like magic, he just appears and is ready to work. So when you hear the details of what David did that has earned him this recognition today, it should come as no surprise to anybody who knows him or works with him that he is exactly where you need him to be when you need him to be there. So with that, I will turn it over to Lieutenant Tom Wooton.
Good morning, everybody. Thanks for allowing us to be here. We have most of our staff here. Some are still out doing sandbags, but it's an honor to be here and work with David and the rest of the people that stand by me. David was performing inspections on 1219 of 23 and came upon a homeless couple behind the businesses located at 1808 Cortez Road. David has been working with the property owner, tenants, and property manager of the apartments north of this property to help remove the homeless and the trash from the property. David made contact with the homeless couple and said, "Are you guys moving on, right?" The male said they were and started helping the female to her feet. David said the male subject attempted a couple of times to help the female to her feet because she appeared weak and unable to stand. David asked the male, "What did she take?" He stated that he did not know, that he had just gotten there and was going to hang out with her. David again asked him what she had taken, and the male still denied knowing. David advised him to lie her down flat. David noticed her skin color became lighter and her lips were turning blue. David called 911 and advised the 911 dispatcher of the situation. The dispatcher asked David some general information and inquired if the female was breathing. David asked that the female had very shallow breaths at times and at times no breath at all. The dispatcher advised David that CPR was going to be needed. David started doing chest compressions for approximately four minutes. David stopped once to see if she was breathing and then continued with chest compressions. Once deputies arrived on scene, they took over chest compressions. EMS then arrived and took over the scene. They were still working on the female at the scene when David gave his information to the deputies, and they thanked him for his help. A follow-up was done that confirmed the female did survive. So just to, David never likes to brag or boast, but I can tell you, the day that this happened, we had no idea that it happened. It was about 6 o'clock that evening, and I got a text from David that said, "I helped save a life today." I immediately called him and said, "What happened?" He told me the same story. And I said, "Why didn't you tell us earlier in the day?" And he said, "I was busy." So that sums up David. Thank you.
I guess I have to say something. So first, I want to, Happy New Year, everybody. I would like to say thank you for this award. And like you said, I didn't, I was just doing my job, and I don't think it's anything anybody that's standing behind me wouldn't have done. I'm on a great team here, and this is, like I like to tell them, this is what we do. We just go and do our jobs, and I just thought this was part of our job. And that's all I got. Thank you.
David, think, I mean, you're the example of what makes code enforcement, the best code enforcement that we have in the state of Florida. I had the pleasure of going to this code enforcement staff meeting, which was very interesting. It's a, it's a great group over there. If you get a chance as a Commissioner to go do it, I recommend you go do it. It's a fun bunch. But David, thank you so much for risking your life to save another life, to make sure this lady got the proper care she needed. She's living today because of you, and that's the simple fact. And I'd like to thank all of our code enforcement folks for what you do every day. You guys go out there, you do a tough job. It's an unappreciated job, and you're walking into situations, you have no idea what you're walking into, and you still go out there and do it, and help the citizens of Manatee County in their quality of life. But David, thank you so much, and we appreciate everything you've done for the citizens of Manatee County and for Manatee County. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Jody. Thank you, team. Thank you, Tom. Next up is, it's a great day, but it's a sad day. We're going to do a Presentation Retirement Award for Che Barnett, who is our Economic Development Guru here in Manatee County, and has helped all of us Commissioners work through the process of economic development and what goes on. And we just appreciate her. Come on down. Wow. She's, yeah. Are you staying now?
Here I am.
You're never without words. But if everybody could join Che, that'd be great. Nicole, are you going to read the presentation?
Yes. Good morning, Commissioners. Nicole Knapp, Development Services Director. And I am, I'm going to start off with some special notes about Che, although she's, now she's got me all of a clump too, so. Today, we're joined here by the team in Manatee County Development Services to celebrate Che Barnett's retirement. Che joined the team of Manatee County back in September of 2014 as a Human Service Analysis in what was then known as the Neighborhood Services Department. While in this role, Che was responsible for the Children's Service Advisory Board, managing a portfolio of 11 nonprofit service providers, presenting 13 prevention-based programs serving Manatee County children and their families. A year later, she transferred to the Economic Development Division as a Redevelopment Coordinator, where her work focused on new and infill development activities in the county southwest district, urban corridor, small business retention and expansion, and rapid response expedited permitting. As a Redevelopment Coordinator, she developed two department-approved initiatives: loitering abatement on the urban corridors in partnership with Manatee County Sheriff's Office, and the second, the 15th Street East Culinary District. Che also created the board-approved program called Inclusive Manatee, a workplace initiative connecting low-income residents to good-quality jobs in Manatee's high-performing business sectors. Another action that really shows Che's passion for being immersed and caring about the streetscape of the community is her lead role in playing with Cleanup Day that she led each spring with businesses along the main corridors. As a member of the Economic Development Team, she leads the charge in coordinating Rapid Response Initiative projects. It's here that she's contributed to establishing 44 new, relocating, and expanding businesses in Manatee County, bringing $884 million in capital investment, 2,600 new jobs, all creating significant expansion of the local tax base. Che has served on many department committees, the two most notable ones being the Manatee-Brownfield Coalition, and the other being the Emergency Support Function for Business and Industry, ESF-18. As the ESF-18 lead for the past two years, Che played an integral role during Hurricanes Ian, Nicole, and Nadia, and after expanding business resource network partners with Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council, DEO, EDA, and FEMA. The county's ESF-18, which she's the lead of, was commended as a model, ESF-18 Partner in Communication from U.S. Economic Development Administration. Che is not leaving us quite yet. She will continue to be part of our department for another three weeks or so. She's, her last day will be February 1st. But come then, we will miss her, hard work, dedication, extreme attention to detail, and the beauty of her serene and harmonious demeanor. I'll just close. There's a couple more people that'd like to speak. I will close by saying, Che, we celebrate you today and wish you well on your well-deserved retirement. I know Director Elliott's here somewhere. He never turns up an opportunity to speak on the mic, too. So I'm going to, I'm going to let Elliott say something before we present Che with her award.
I have to say, two more beards and we have an all-bearded Commission, aside from Commissioner Ballard, don't grow a beard. Good morning. Good morning, everybody. I just got in from out of town last night, and I read Nicole's email, and I'm like, oh my gosh, I need to be here. We all know the great things that Jay has, Che has brought to the county, but I just, I thought of a, it's a learning lesson for all of us, because we're put on this earth with certain God-gifted abilities. And it's how we apply them, it becomes fruitful. So I know the short time that I have worked with Che, begging her for help, and she just gave me that beautiful smile that God blessed her with, but she always applied her God-given abilities towards others that impact others. And when we do that consistently and focus on applying our gifts to others, I promise you, you'll be rewarded 10 times over. And if you look behind you, this is part of the beginning stages of your reward. So let that be a learning lesson to me, to all of us, to finish strong as well, continue to apply while we're on this beautiful planet. And I know you're not retiring. There's a lot left in you. I'm blessed to have gotten to know you, and Dad called you Che Che. So Che Che, thank you so much for all that you've done for me and this beautiful community. And it's rewarding, I'm sure, to you, being a native here of the impact that Nicole shared that you've made to this community. And thank you for applying your God-gifted ability that we can all see that it's a learning lesson for us. So thank you so much. We all love you. I love you more. Thank you, Che.
Thank you, Elliott.
Good morning, Commissioners, Mr. Chair, our County Administrator. I'm not going to take Elliott's advice and look behind me, because I know, I sense there's a group of people there that just exemplify what Manatee County is all about. You show up, you support. And that's been my experience here for the past nine years. And nine years isn't a long time, and maybe not a remarkable career. I've worked, and though I've worked in community and economic development for over 25 years, so I appreciate the opportunity to transition and you giving me a moment to do that. There are folks that I'd like to thank, so many people, but a few, maybe my original hiring team back in 2014, Janice Dunbar Smith and Tracy Adams, and thanking Denise Greer for graciously accepting my notice of retirement. And the, just dozens, hundreds of folks, employees, coworkers here in between that time, that have just been really fantastic to work with. Few people I'd like to call out. Everyone is good, good, good people, but Debbie Ash always made me laugh, always did a little dance, always had a song to sing. Debbie DeLeon, true model of Ace. When I grow up, I hope to be like her. She's just embraced by the community, does her work, and greatly appreciated. The Development Services Team, I've only been a part of it maybe for about nine weeks or so, but they have certainly been important to my career here, especially the economic development work, a part of my, a part of the scoping meeting and rapid response efforts here. And I'd certainly like to call out Jim Rigo in that regard. He's been a part of every single project that I've worked on. Excuse me. And I always felt great when he was in the room. I knew we were off to just a good professional start on every project because of Jim. The ESF-18 Team, really fantastic folks. Our chambers and business associations that make economic development happen in Manatee County. And special, really special thanks to Liza Martone. She's my partner in economic development and just does great work. She's been kind of my ride-or-die partner the past few years, and I really appreciate her. Two more things. And they're, they are related to Manatee County government, but they're more kind of personal things. Prior to coming on board with Manatee County Government, I was caregiving for my mom, and we took advantage of, or we had, you know, we took advantage of the opportunity to engage in some of the Aging Services Respite Program. And because of that, we were able to keep my mom at home, not in a nursing home, and care for her. I'm sure that added many, many years to her life. She lived well into her 90s. The second thing is, one evening, my daughter, as a young girl, missed, her SCAP bus coming into the county was late, and she missed her connection. And Eva Brown, I don't, she's no longer with MCAD, got permission to drive my daughter home after hours. This is, these are the things that Manatee County does. And there was not a day that I did not come here just appreciative of who you are and what you do, and attempting in any small way that I could to repay that debt. And it was a debt. Finally, I have to show appreciation to my number-one team, Ralph Barnett, Ralph Barnett, and our daughter, Nzinga Barnett. Thank you for your support. You're not supposed to cry. I'm the one that's scared. And that's it. Thank you all. I'm going to turn around.
Che, don't go anywhere yet. We have a couple Commissioners like to say something to you, and Commissioner Van Austinbridge is up first.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Chair. Che, in an organization of, you know, 2,000 people, you are one of the brightest stars in the entire organization. It was a sad day, I think, when all of us looked down and saw your retirement on the agenda today. You, all those things that you described with your coworkers and the way you described the county, it describes you as well. I mean, you are all of the greatest aspects and attributes of this county. You are all of them. Come to work every day, feeling like you owe the county a debt, the county owes you a debt for service that you provided to this county for all these years. And, you know, we could get into the business aspects of all of the businesses and the jobs and economic development that you brought to the county, which is tremendous, but it goes much beyond just the business aspect, and it goes into you as a person, and what a great person and coworker you've been as you've served the county. I don't have enough words to say, you know, what a great asset you've been to the county and what a wonderful person you are, and I'm sure your beautiful family is glad to have you back. We're sad to lose you, though, but Godspeed to you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Che, I didn't know your first name was actually Wendy, but okay. I like Che. When I first came on the Board, I had, one of my first meetings was with you, and you were so calm and cool and collective about the items we were discussing. And I was like, wow, she's really got it together. And I said, I want to tell you how much I appreciated that first meeting and all the meetings we've had since that time, about economic development, about the things that we've talked about, be it, you know, Shady Brook, or be it Talavast, or any of that type of stuff that you just jumped right into when somebody asked you to get into it. So I appreciate you and how much you've done, and you can see how many people appreciate you and what you meant to Manatee County. We're going to miss you, and I hope you have a lot of fun on your retirement, and go do something fun, go travel, go do something fun. But thank you so much for all you've given to Manatee County and its citizens.
Thank you.
Is there, I see Max there with some, oh, I think, flowers, all kinds of stuff, so. The first time a husband got flowers for a service. There you go. You don't see that all the time. You don't see that all the time. But Max, would you guys, do you guys want to? You want to say something?
Good afternoon, Commissioner, or good morning, should be afternoon. Lauren Cratch, Senior Director of Business Relations for the Bradenton Area Economic Development Corporation. We just wanted to show our appreciation for Shay. It's been a pleasure working with her for the last decade. You have just been God-sent to us. And her demeanor, as you mentioned, she's always thoughtful and mindful and just a great friend to work with. We're really going to miss you. And congratulations on your retirement and best wishes.
Thank you Shay again, appreciate you. Thank you. All right, we'll wait a second while half the room clears out. And let them get out of the way before we bring them another fun item coming up. Our next presentation, something fun happening this weekend that's coming up, is our Manatee County Fair is coming up. So I'd like to invite the Fair Board and the, all the royalty up.
Thank you for allowing us to come out today and speak about something that we all truly love. And it's actually our annual homecoming that's known as the Manatee County Fair. This year, we're celebrating our 108th anniversary, which will open up this coming Thursday, January 11th, where our fair, where our theme this year is Fun Is in the Air at the Manatee County Fair. I'd like to start off this morning, first of all, by thanking our sponsors. Our fair is not, is only possible through the hundreds of volunteers as well as the financial support our sponsors provide each year. We have 11 different committees that work together to present this, present the fair each year. And we'd like to start off by thanking Manatee County Sheriff's Department, Manatee County EMS, and the City of Palmetto Police Department for their support in helping us plan for a safe environment for this year's fair. We're also extremely grateful to have our sponsors that just have gone over and above this year. This year, we have nine gold level sponsors, 17 silver level sponsors, and 14 bronze level sponsors who either contributed financially or donated their time, services, or materials to help us present this fair. And we would ask everyone to make sure that we thank our sponsors by patronizing their businesses. And if you go to our website, and when you see their link, you click on their logo, it'll take you directly to their link. While we're two days away from the gates opening, we have two very important events that happen each year before the fair opens. And our fair festivities began on December 2nd this year in the Palmetto High School's auditorium with our annual Fair Queen Pageant. This year's fair festivities, our Queen's Pageant winners are Miss Manatee County, our Fair Queen is Ally Carpenter.
Got the wave down.
Our Junior Miss is Anna Rodoicich. Our Little Miss is Macy Osment. And our Mini Miss is Sage Van Heining. And then the next event that happens, I'm glad, we were happy to have y'all visit us last week for our VIP and our Distinguished Citizen Luncheon that was held last Thursday. We're pleased to announce this, this year's well-deserved Distinguished Citizen Award winners are Alan and Kay Butler. We'd like to thank Mr. and Ms. Butler for their service and dedication that they have provided to our Manatee County community through many, many, many years of their hard work and efforts in raising funds that went back to very, very good causes. As for the fair, we have a very exciting entertainment lineup this year. On opening day, we have January, on January 11th, we have local bluegrass band Highway 41 South. On Friday and Saturday, we're going to have Carolina the Band performing. Their sound is characterized by rich harmonies. Their music is absorbed in solid and meaningful lyrics, and their style and presentation is synonymous with many of the great vocal quartets. And then on Sunday, we'll have two concerts. We'll have Bayside Worship at 6:30, and then at 7:45, Micah Tyler. He's a national-known artist. He'll be taking the stage at 7:45. On Monday, January 15th, Monday, January 15th is our Students Day from noon to free, noon to 3:00. Students with their IDs will get in for free, thanks to Woodruff and Sons. But we also have a concert that day as well, which is local band 301 Travelers, and they're performing Rock Country, Rocking Country with a Twist of Freedom. They're also going to be performing on Wednesday as well for us. On Thursday, we have the Petty Hearts performing. That's a National Tom Petty Tribute. And then on Friday and Saturday, we have Rockland Road. They'll be joining us, joining us again this year, and we're excited to hear their tremendous music again. I'd like to back up and go to Tuesday, January 16th. We'd like to invite everyone, as we continue the honor of honoring our veterans with a Veterans Tribute. Our Veterans Tribute is going to be at 6:00 PM. That is also free, that's our Gate Free Night. That's provided by Palmetto Build, and that's for building stronger families. So that is our free night. The only thing we ask is that you bring a canned good. We'll be taking a collection of canned goods. Last year, we were very fortunate, and our community donated over 1,689 pounds back to our Manatee County Food Bank, and we're going to be doing that again this year. Our daily entertainment is just as exciting as the main stage acts. We have Circus Hollywood presenting rock stars. We're having Universal Championship Wrestling coming back with us again this year. The Ryb Road Family Farm Petting Zoo, the Hollywood Racing Pigs, Camel Education and Demonstration, along with camel rides. We'll have local cowboy Les McDowell. He'll be doing, he'll have his cowboy camp and poetry set up. We also have live, it's called the Florida Ag Experience, which is a live milk cow demonstration. If you want to come out and learn how to milk a cow, we'll have one there for you, and they'll, they'll train you how to do it. We also have Strolling Axe and Mark Dobson's One-Man Band, Pirate Man Dan, and Fritzy's Brothers One-Man Circus. And new this year, we're going to have Purgatory Ironworks. They'll be doing old school, they're going to be teaching the old school of blacksmithing, old school style. In addition to our entertainment lineup, we have one of the largest 4H and FFA youth livestock shows in the state of Florida. This year, we have 771 Manatee County 4H and FFA registered to show livestock and plants in this year's fair. And these, these youth will be showing 837 different livestock animals and 212 plants. We'd like to remind everybody, on both Saturdays of the fair, the first Saturday, January 13th, at 1 o'clock, is our steer sale, followed by the rabbit sale, and then on, and the plant sale will also be that, on the 13th at 6:00 PM. And then the swine sale will be the following Saturday, Saturday at January 20th at 1:00 PM. Arts and crafts received their entries this past weekend, and we're pleased to announce we received 1,214 entries from 444 exhibitors all throughout. These are all county entries, and this is an increase over last year. We have several contests that we're having. We have hay bale contests that turned out really good. We're judging those today. Very excited to see what the youth of our county came up with, to go along with our theme. It was really, really nice. We also have the Sunrise Corn Dog Eating Contest, the Charity BBQ Contest, the 8th Annual Hog Culling Contest, and the Baby Contest on January 20th. We have four different age groups there. That'll be, that's an exciting day. And then also on January 20th, we have the Manatee County Sheriff's Department. We'll look to retain their title against the firefighters of our county in the annual Peaches Donut Eating Contest. I'm not sure why the firemen ever think they're going to beat a sheriff's deputy in a donut eating contest, but the Sheriff's Department has held the title for the last three years. As always, Bell City will be providing the wonderful midway. And last but not least, we have lots and lots of wonderful fair food. Any kind of fair food you can think of, we have it there. And I know I rambled on a lot of things. If you just want to go to our website, everything, there's a daily schedule there, and you can see our entire lineup. Please, please help us thank our sponsors by patronizing their businesses. And also, just want to remind everybody, in consideration of the current economy, we have, we did not raise prices again. The prices are $10 for adult, $6 for active military duty, and $6 for children. Children five and under are free, and it's $10 for parking. So we invite everybody to come out, and we believe you'll, you'll agree, Fun Is in the Air at the Manatee County Fair. With that, I'd like to turn it over to our President this year, Patrick Bryant.
Thank you, Danny. Good morning, County Commissioners. I'm Patrick Bryant. I'm the President of the Manatee River Fair Association. On behalf of the Board of Directors of the Manatee River Fair Association, I want to extend my personal invitation to you to come see what's up in the, the fun that's in the air at the Manatee County Fair this year. As Danny explained to you, we have a very wide breadth, from arts and crafts to livestock exhibitions to culinary arts, all aimed at showing what is best about Manatee County and giving its citizens the opportunity to showcase their skills and their talents. We hope you'll come to see that, and it, I take great pride in being a part of this annual tradition. And as Manatee County has grown and has changed, I'd like to think that one of the constants that we have is that the Manatee County Fair has been and will be here to show off Manatee County. We hope you'll join us at the fair next week. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Up on the Board is Commissioner Satcher.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Always great to have you here, and then, of course, it's always great to be at the fair. And so I'm excited about this year. Thank you so much for coming. This is really, as you go through your presentation and what you're doing each night, I mean, this is a lot of what makes America a wonderful place to be, and Manatee County a special place. And so I know that those things, you know, sometimes it's easy to show up somewhere and just assume, well, this always happens, and it's going to happen no matter what. But the truth is, a lot of people put in a lot of hard work to make it happen, and it's obvious, obvious by the fact that you haven't raised prices, that it's really your heart that's making that happen. And so I just want you to know, we appreciate that. And, and you mentioned that some of the dates and times, if you have a, you know, a family and you, you can't afford to go to the fair right now, times might be tight, there's, there's specific times where you can come and get in free. And so that's amazing. I appreciate y'all doing that. I wanted to read off, I was going to put you on the spot and have you do it, but I went ahead and looked it up while you were talking, so I didn't do that to you, your gold level sponsors, because we want them to come back next year. So I've got nine online. Will these be right if I read them?
Yes.
I got Manassota Florine, Violia, MTC, Manatee Technical College, Everglades, Farm Equipment, Neal Communities, Palmetto Build, Arctic Air Home Services, Manatee County, and Mosaic. So special thanks to them as well. So thank you all so much.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Thank you for your comments. The fair is always a blast. I love going to it. I go on those rides and get my pre-astronaut training on those rides. But I do those before I eat. But thank you guys so much again for putting on the fair. It's a wonderful, wonderful time. I hope all the citizens of Manatee County make it out and have a great time. And Commissioner Ballard's on the Board.
Thank you guys so much. We're really looking forward to the fair, as I do every year. I've got two little girls, a six-year-old and a three-year-old, and so they absolutely love the fair every year, and their favorite is the pig racing. So I'm very excited to see that that is back this year. Thank you, guys.
Commissioner Ballard, didn't you ask me if you can get your pre-baby in the contest?
Nope.
Okay, just make sure. All right, thank you all very much. Appreciate it. Congratulations, have a great time. Our next presentation's going to be on our Veterans Connection, and our Veterans and Veterans Community Services Director, Lee DiPaolo, is going to come up and give his presentation. Thank you, sir. Good morning.
Thank you. It's a, it's a pleasure to be here. I think they had me at racing pigs and Peaches Donuts. And of course, the veterans, the veterans, honoring of the veterans. And you'll see the theme here across the county as we get into not only what we do here in the county, but with the numerous partners and everybody that come together to take care of our veterans. As mentioned, I'm Lee DiPaolo, the Director of Community and Veteran Services. We have over 40,000 veterans living in this county. I heard the Chair yesterday mention 42,000. I am one of them. I moved here in March of '21 and served 26 years in the Air Force. I was a Special Ops and Combat Rescue Helicopter Pilot. I was blessed with multiple command opportunities to include command in combat. Since I've been here for two months, every day, we have a discussion on veterans, whether it's you all as Commissioners, whether it's the Administrator side, the deputies, other departments that are out there, and of course, our world-class Veteran Services Division. But it's not just limited to those. It's other partners, other government agencies, non-governmental agencies. Core pillars, so supporting, connecting, empowering our veterans is imperative. We're proud to take a focused and deliberate approach to what we do here in the county. But this is a whole community effort. You'll hear that emphasized, you'll see it as we go through for all the dedicated partners and what they do across the Board. To talk about our Veteran Services Division up front, I'd like to turn it over to Renee Medina, as a Coast Guard veteran. So Renee?
Good morning. I'm Renee Medina. I'm the Division Manager for Manatee County Veteran Services. As you see here, this is my staff of Veteran Service Counselors. We were blessed to have two added positions to our roster this year, and I'm proud to say that we have hired both of them. My second one is starting sometime this week or next week. I'm waiting on a start date. But it's really a pleasure because there's a lot of veterans in Manatee County, and that population is growing exponentially. Us as Manatee County Veterans Employees, we often are mistaken for VA. We're not the VA. We are hired and regulated by Florida State Statute here in Florida to assist the veterans of Manatee County. We are all veterans ourselves. We have all served during a wartime period, and that's important because that's what the Florida State Statute requires. With that, our purpose is to support, connect, empower the veterans and families of Manatee County with the benefits offered not only by VA, but by our local, our community, federal and state benefit governments for earned benefits that these veterans have served their country to be able to collect on. As stated, there are about 40,000 veterans in Manatee County, but we are growing. I know that the PACT Act with VA was passed at the end of 2022, and with our office, that has exponentially increased our services to veterans. As you can see with our numbers, we had over 2,000 new clients in 2023. We served 20, over 2,300 appointments, and with our office, over 24,000 phone calls and emails assisting veterans of Manatee County. We're busy. We're really making an effort and trying to assist everyone that we can with the PACT Act. When the PACT Act was passed, it actually enabled benefits for one in four veterans across the country and across the world who were not eligible for benefits before that. So with veterans' benefits, veterans have options. They have places that they can go to to have assistance with their services. We have advantages in Manatee County over VA and other service organizations. For one, we're subject matter experts. We are trained, accredited, and reaccredited, tested every year by the VA and Florida Department of Veterans Affairs to be subject matter experts. They're local. There's no need to travel when they're using our services, and our services are free. When that, when I say free, of course, nothing is for free, but it is using our tax dollar money to take care of our local veterans, and we keep that local. Because every county has somebody who does our jobs, we only help the veterans of Manatee County who reside in or work in our county. And that, that frees up our Veteran Service Counselors to help our own, to help our own community. We're tested every year to keep our qualifications current. Two times a year, we go through conference to make sure that we're aware of all of the programs and things that the, that the VA is rolling out, all of the new... all of the new benefits that they're offering, and make sure that we're fully aware and able to enact on them right away. And the most important thing is we're invested. These are our neighbors. These are our coworkers. These are our, our community, our brothers and sisters in arms. So, it's very important to us to provide these benefits to our veterans. Veterans Affairs, you are able to use them as well. They are free. However, it's the federal government, so it's a little more red tape involved with that. They do have a general benefits knowledge, but they do not practice what's called a fully developed claim process. That's very important because when you're not practicing a fully developed claim process, the claims process for a veteran can take over a year to get benefits processed. With us, we're always going to try to do a fully developed claim to give the veterans the best chance of getting service connected the first time so they don't have to go through a long appeals process. And of course, Bay Pines is our closest benefits office, so it's a distance for our veterans to utilize their services. For our office, first and foremost, we are a benefits office. The main benefits that we work with, of course, are service-connected disability, non-service-connected pension, VA healthcare, and VA burial. These services are very important to our veterans and to our community because once our veterans are connected to those benefits and those benefits are being provided by the VA, it frees up the services and benefits for people in our community to use what we have available for, for non-veterans who are not eligible for these benefits. With that, we do a lot more than just those benefits. I've tried to highlight here all of the other services. When I was told today only had five minutes to present this, I kind of choked a little bit because I could talk for hours about what we do at Veteran Services. But these are the main things that we do. We, we try to make sure and secure military discharge documents that help veterans with securing their benefits. We connect veterans to all eligible benefits, even if it's not something specific to this area, but also to our community. We work hand-in-hand with our community partners to take care of everything that the VA doesn't take care of, including employment, education, food insecurity, homelessness, healthcare, all of those things. And to discuss further, I'm going to go ahead and introduce Sarah Brown, our Deputy Director of Community Services.
Everyone's much taller than me. Good morning. So, something we're really excited about with veteran, is Veteran Connections. It's a new initiative to help strengthen the bond between the veterans, their concerns, and through the community through an enhanced, interactive, and redesigned website and increased outreach. We'll utilize innovations such as GIS Story Map, Decision Tree, and other comprehensive ways to connect veterans with resources, our own Veteran Connection hub. We're increasing outreach across the veteran community to identify into the needs and connect them with those that need them the most, building more relationships and avenues to assist veterans than ever before, and now bring them all those resources together in one consolidated place. Of course, navigating all this information would be otherwise overwhelming, so we're updating our website, developing interactive tools to help navigate and connect veterans with information that they're seeking 24/7/365, helping to drive awareness and foster partnerships and actively support and honor our veterans. So, of course, partnerships are huge, play a huge role in helping to broaden our resources and outreach efforts. Our Veteran Services is working with our very own libraries to present benefit lectures as we continue to broaden the reach to as many veterans as possible. And there's a possibility for outreach offices out east at the Lakewood Ranch Library in the near future. Manatee County Animal Welfare is now partnering with Pets for Patriots. We've waived fees for veterans for years now, but this is just an added benefit, and it's a great resource. You can get $150 Welcome Home Gift Card for supplies, pre-and post-adoption support, and discounted pet care, something that we wouldn't be able to provide without this partnership. Pets for Patriots also helps provide foster homes for, for active-duty military that are deployed. So, that's a really awesome benefit if people take part of that program. Now, we know that companion animals reduce impacts of PTSD, depression, anxiety, and loneliness. So, of course, if you're a veteran and you're looking for a pet, it is free, and you have all these great benefits to go along with it. We're working with our own Transit Division to help reach more veterans by advertising on our transit buses. In 2023, Transit provided 3,542 rides for veterans. So, we're hoping this advertising could really reach, far reach. But we're also looking at different ways to continue broadening that advertising on the buses and throughout, throughout Manatee County. So, all of this are in, are part of our Veteran Connections, identifying the needs, connecting resources, and enhance communication. And now, I'm going to turn it back over to our director.
Thanks, Renee and Sarah. So, I'm going to close out with some examples of empowerment. And there's lots of different ways to empower veterans, but the two that I'll focus on here are jobs and housing. Our Human Resource Department do, does amazing things. I think within the first week of arriving here, we had a hiring fair that was focused on veterans. They're also taking a look at new programs that are out there. There's a, for those that have, haven't been in the service for a while, DOD has come a long way, Department of Defense, and the type of programs they have to transition off of active duty. One of those is called Department of Defense Skill Bridge. And what that is, is an internship during the last 180 days of your time in the military where you go to work, where it could be private sector, it could be government. It's anybody that wants to participate in this, this program, it's free of charge. That's something that we can do with this county to offer opportunities to those folks likely coming out of MacDill or the Coast Guard Station over in St. Pete that are getting ready to transfer and see what government is like. There's no obligation to hire, but it's a great program. And I've heard nothing but good things by people I know that have been through it. The second one, and I, I'm really glad to see this, that Kate and her team are looking at our Military Spouse Fellowships through hiring our heroes. And spouses are often forgotten throughout a career. You move every two years, sometimes even less. And their careers, it's very challenging to follow and, and go forward. If you're a teacher, you have to get recertified in, in a, a new state. All of those kind of things that happen. And it's hard to even pick up on a career. So, now there are programs that are dedicated and focused on the spouses themselves that I'm really happy to see. And the Military Spouse Fellowship is an example of that. It's another thing we can do here in the county. It is, again, a cost-free program to us, or very, very limited cost to us if we go down that path. Partners is a theme, as you've seen. And I want to highlight one here on the career and then a couple when we get to the homeless support. But Career Coast, Sun Coast, and, and I know there are others. I'm not, I'm not excluding anyone in all these highlights. I just wanted to show you what this community does. In 2023, 102 veterans were serviced, and again, spouses, 22 of those, as you can see. And I know you all are familiar with what they do. One thing that I, I do want to pass on is they, they pass an anecdote that kind of links how all of the non-governmental organizations out there work together. It was a homeless veteran who was living in a car under case management with St. Vincent de Paul and was in the process of moving to an apartment, but it was coming up short and was unemployed. So, they went and they found this gentleman a, a job. They, they worked with him for three days before a hiring event that was focused on a career that met his background. They helped him build his resume, interview prep, all of those kind of things. And then, they even got some financial assistance to bridge that gap before he got in the apartment. And they went forward. They got that from a local VFW chapter. He attended, he attended the hiring event, got the job. He was well-dressed and well-prepared, and then moved into an apartment a week later. So, impact. And that's just one example. Moving to the housing piece, the, the homeless support. Across our nation, 35,574 homeless veterans in America. The source for that's the HUD Annual Homelessness Report. In Florida, it's 2,558, same source. According to Turning Points, last point in time count, which was January of 2023, we'll have another one coming up in a few weeks, we have approximately 58 unhoused veterans in Manatee County. But they believe that number is higher, at 80 to 120. And we'll again see with the next point in time what that looks like. So, programs like Turning Points, what they, what they do, day in and day out, is, is downright amazing. With the four that we highlight on here, they serviced 662 veterans in 2023. 662, and there are more. There are others that, that, that are out there, as you, as you well know. Couple things on things that we're trying to do here and partners that we're working with within the county. One of them, we had a great meeting yesterday with Manatee County Housing Authority, the VA, and some, some other folks within our county. And it was led by the chair. And we are looking at a way to move forward with our own vouchers for what's the HUD and VA Support Housing Program, or HUD-VASH. Right now, we're in an inter-local agreement with Sarasota. And it, it works, and we have vouchers within this county, but, but we can do more. It's a powerful program in, with, that HUD and the VA lead. It includes support services for veterans in addition to the, the housing vouchers that are out there. So, we're working diligently to move that forward and get more of those HUD-VASH vouchers here in Manatee County. Also, the housing authorities that we have here, Manatee County and Bradenton, all have waitlist preference for veterans. So, there's another avenue and another way for veterans to, to perhaps move forward with the Section 8 housing more quickly. And finally, as you all well know, there's the Tunnel to Towers opportunity that's coming here. We've donated the 8.7 acres, and you can see on the slide the 38 comfort homes and 84-unit apartment complex. So, impact. And I love Renee says this, "You served us, now let us serve you." That's what this is all about. It's a whole of community approach, and we appreciate your time here today.
Thank you, Lee. Excuse me. We have a commis, Cup Commissioners on the board. Commissioner Burden, Beard, you're up first. Sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. No, I, I appreciate the hard work that you and your team have put together to come up with a, with a solution and connecting all these different organizations. You know, I think this is so unique, right? Because this is something that's so different that, that, that we're going after, that I think is going to be the model for the rest of the state. And you all are the frontrunners of that. And so, when I see all these different organizations that we're connecting with, how we're marketing, this is something that, that's going to really make a difference. And I know these are like the beginning stages of this, but this is, this is awesome. And so, I just appreciate all the hard work that you and your team have laid out. And now, we can see how we, how we're going to execute it and ensure that, that our veterans are taken care of. So, I just appreciate it. You know, with Commissioner, you work with Commissioner Ron with the HUD vouchers and, and, you know, ensuring that our homeless veterans are housed and all these job opportunities and, and things of that. This is just awesome. This is first-class, and I'm proud to the fact that we're going to be able to offer this here in Manatee County. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Lee, a couple quick questions, real quick. On the transit side for veterans, is this a, is this going to be an on-call service where they can schedule an appointment? The veteran can schedule an appointment if he can't get to the doctors and such, if he can't get to the needs that he asked, that he or she needs, like dentist, doctor, whatever? They can call up or go online, set an appointment? We can have a mini bus or some type of transit pick them up and take them to that?
I can answer that. Yeah, so currently, we have the handy bus that services that door-to-door need. We're actually working with Transit currently to expand that. We're working with funding to be able to expand that more robustly throughout the county.
Yeah, I know, I know that we take people back and forth to Bay Pines and places like that, but, you know, sometimes our local veterans have no, no source of transportation, and then they can't maybe not get to the MCAT station or MCAT, MCAT spot, stop. So, but we will have that in the future where we can have an on-call service for our veterans to call up and move forward.
Yes, sir. It's in the works, definitely. And we also work with other community partners as well for transportation for veterans with both the DAV and the VA. They provide services as well. Most of those services are going to be to VA-specific care facilities, but we are working to expand that for private care as well.
Okay. Yeah, that's so important to be able to, veterans to be able to get to those type of appointments. Appreciate that. On the HUD-VASH program, we, we, just to elaborate on what we talked about, we have had several conversations. Unfortunately for us, the wheels of government at the federal level move a little slow, and we would like to speed this process up, which we are working on with our Housing Authority. And the Housing Authority has been great. The Manatee County Housing Authority's been great to work with. So, hopefully, we can get that moving as quicker than we would like. But it, we, it is moving forward. So, just to let everybody know that, and I appreciate your guys' work on that. Also, just all the veterans out there, make sure you use Veteran Services. It's there for you. I didn't even realize it, so I'm going to meet with Renee probably in the next couple of weeks to find out what, if I'm eligible for anything. But the veteran you've served, it's your opportunity to get what's due to you. So, make sure you get ahold of our Veteran Services. But on that, thank you guys very much for the presentation. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on. We have one proclamation today, and normally, a commissioner would go down and make the proclamation. But I'm asking our Public Safety Director, Jody Fisk, to make this presentation today for this proclamation, being that she is very closely aligned or very closely related to one of the, one of the people that are going to receive this proclamation today. So, Director, thank you.
Thank you. Jody Fisk, Public Safety Director. Whereas certified registered nurse anesthetist are advanced-practice registered nurses providing anesthesia care to patients in the United States for more than 150 years, CRNAs are among the nation's most trusted profession. Whereas legislation passed by Congress in 1986 made nurse anesthetist in the, the first nursing specialty to be accorded direct reimbursement rights by Medicare. Whereas CRNAs are the primary anesthesia providers in rural communities and continue to be the primary providers of anesthesia care to U.S. military personnel. Whereas CRNAs practice in every setting in which anesthesia is delivered, from traditional hospital suites and obstetrical delivery rooms to critical-access hospitals, from ambulatory surgical centers to the offices of dentists, podiatrists, ophthalmologists, pain management specialists, and more. Whereas CRNAs are qualified to make independent judgments regarding all aspects of anesthesia care based on their education, training, and licensure. Whereas CRNAs are trusted anesthesia experts, caring for patients safely and compassionately, delivering specialized, cost-effective care to patients from newborns to seniors for every type of procedure in all types of facilities. And whereas CRNAs experienced in critical care nursing in addition to anesthesia care provides the training and education to address unique healthcare challenges of some of our sickest patients, including veterans. And now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Manatee County, Florida, that January 21st to the 27th, 2024, shall be known, designated, and set aside as National Certified Registered Nurse Anesthetist Week in Manatee County, Florida, adopted with a quorum present and voting this ninth day of January 2024. So, I'm really excited about this group. I don't think a lot of folks really know. December 23rd of 2020, we had a call with the state about COVID vaccinations. My mom, this lovely lady here behind me in the blue suit, says you should contact the Florida Association of Nurse Anesthetist. That evening, they put out an all-call to arms for CRNAs to step forward and volunteer. By Christmas Eve, we had over 147 people on that list. By New Year's, it was over 700. And through the efforts of FANA, the state of Florida had over 3,300 volunteers that they coordinated with over a million and a half hours donated free to vaccinate people for COVID operations. During Hurricane Idalia, Dr. Michelle Canale, who is also standing behind me, was one of the first phone calls that I received as far as, "What do you need?" And FANA personally purchased and delivered to Rubonia thousands of dollars of supplies for relief efforts out there. It's been consistent since FANA stepped forward to volunteer during the disasters that have occurred in Florida. They're one of the first five phone calls that I received. "What do you want? Where do you need it? How fast can we get it there?" So, I am really, really proud to present this to them. Thank you for the Thank you for the opportunity. And with that, I will hand it over to Dr. Michelle Canali.
Well, Jody really said a lot of facts about CRNAs, so I won't go through all of those again. But and thank you for mentioning all of the work that we've done here for Manatee County. We are nurses first. We started as registered nurses before going into the critical care units and working in ICUs before we can go to school to become nurse anesthetist. We care about people. We care about the community. We love to give back to our community, and we're very, very happy to have helped in any way. I want to thank you all very much for recognizing CRNAs nationally in Manatee County. Thank you.
We're good.
Oh, thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you for what you all do. For proclamation, we need a motion, and we've had the motion moved by Commissioner Satcher, seconded by Commissioner Turner, and and everybody's voted. So the motion carries for the proclamation, six, and with Amanda Ballard, our Commissioner Ballard, abstained. So thank you very much. Thank you, Jody. Also, can you give us a quick update?
Again, I'm going to do my very best that this be the last time that I stand in front of you today. So the weather is remaining the same. We're looking, it's pretty breezy outside right now. The sustained winds are probably moving into our area starting now. They, we're looking at sustained between 25 miles an hour, possibly up to 40. Sometime between 2:00 and 7:00 PM is when we should start to see the worst of the weather moving in. We could potentially see wind gusts anywhere from 40 to 55 miles an hour. We are continuing to monitor potential isolated flood events, definitely along the coastal areas. It's really dangerous on the beaches right now, so I cannot encourage people enough. Do not go swimming. However, we do have our lifeguards that are out there, double red flags, and we will actually be staging some of our lifeguards at beach headquarters this evening. So should we start to see coastal flooding, we will have the ability to run rescue from the beach headquarters. There is the potential for tornadoes, so I want to make sure everyone is registered for the alerts, for the weather alerts. Pay attention to them. And if anybody is utilizing the Skyway Bridge, pay attention. I, it will probably close at some point or multiple points during the day today. So those notifications are pushed out by FDOT. You can see their website. That will also get pushed out from Public Safety as we get those notifications. Rainfall, we're probably looking at about a half an inch to one and a half inches, so not the significant amount that we saw last month. But with the winds and the potential for surge from the Gulf into the coast, rain may not really be the concern. It may be just the coastal inundation. We currently have four sandbag locations. They will close, we're monitoring the winds again, so probably we're looking at 2:00 o'clock, maybe being the max amount of time that we could be out there, but they are self-serve. If anybody has physical limitations and they cannot get sandbags, please call 311 and notify us. They will push that information to our teams, and we will do do our very best to get sandbags out to you. If there's standing water on the roads again, please don't drive through them. Turn around, don't drown, be smart, don't don't take any risks. With winds being a heavy factor in this event, downed power lines, don't drive over them. If you see a downed power line, you need to report it. You can report it through FPNL. You can also report 311, PRECO, whoever your power company is. Be safe in that regard. That's a big one. The power lines, if they do come down, you don't know if they're active or not, and there really is only one way to to test that. Transit has no time or no plans at this time to shut down early. We are going to monitor the winds, and the beach trolley may have to alter its route depending on if there's standing saltwater in the roads. So all of that will be pushed out through our messaging. Important for residents as well is there is an incident-opening crisis track for self-reporting of any damages. I want to be clear that we do not have a declaration. This is not a named event, but we do want to be tracking damages that are reported so that if, in the event, the weather does get severe to the point that a declaration is even discussed, we already have our information and we're ready to take action. Are there any questions?
Any questions for the Director? Thank you very much. All right, moving along. Before we get into citizens' comment, there was a request to pull one item from consent, which is item number 44 by Commissioner Van Ostenbridge. So we'll address that once we get to consent. Thank you, sir. Up now, we're going to do citizen comment on future agenda items. And this is limited to 30 minutes total, with individuals being able to speak for three minutes. Up on the board first, I have Mr. Glenn Gibellina. Please state your name and county of residence, and you know the, you know, you know the rules.
Is this thing working here? For the record, Glenn Gibellina. So social media, let's talk about social media. Ms. Ballard called me a gadfly on social media. I was kind of mad about it, but then I looked into it, and I said, "You're exactly right, Amanda. I am a gadfly." So let me tell you what we do. We challenge elected officials on policy decisions. This is what we do. So I'm going to wear that badge of honor, and that's how I'll be, I'll be signing myself. Glenn Gibellina, gadfly, and I am from Manatee County. So future agenda items, I want to go over, and by the way, everything I present to you today, you have a copy of. So let's talk about the impact fees, right? 172 pages we paid for, right? I did a records request, so I'm going to find out what this is. There's where we should be, and we're not. By statute, you should use the most recent. You did not. George Cruz was exactly right. By law, based on most recent localized data, and you took 172 pages, and you just 86'd it. Let's talk about the wetlands, right? Did you use best practices for the wetlands? Did you look at Orange County? They increased it to 100 feet. That's what they did. You didn't look at any of their best practices, and I wrote all of them, and I got a response for one. They're happy to come down and talk to you about it. Orange County, they are a home run. Now, let's talk about near and dear to me, and that is homeless veterans. There's a great presentation today, right? But what I didn't hear, housing, housing first. We have none. You talk about Section 8, there's a five-year waiting list. You talk about VASH vouchers, years in the making. You took a million one out of the last nine million for veteran housing, and you diverted those funds. You could have solved this problem overnight, and you didn't. And what really bothers me, you didn't bring in the stakeholders. You didn't bring in turning points. You didn't bring in a Salvation Army. I don't even think you brought in Veteran Service. You could have said, "Look, we know of 80, but really, we're probably closer to 120. We got a million and a half left. Do you think we should take and do office design? Or do you think we should use it to to house our veterans immediately?" You have no immediate plans for our veterans. You're doing great services, but when you're living under a bridge, until you put a roof over their homes, they're still going to be homeless and devastated. You need to get that money back, have a meaningful conversation with the stakeholders. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up is Mr. Ken Piper. Please state your name, county of residence, and you have three minutes, sir.
Ken Piper, Manatee County resident. I'm here today to request a future agenda item, or at least a work session concerning occurrences at Aqua by the Bay. The biggest concern is they're putting in Gabian walls. Now, Gabian comes from the Italian, meaning "big cage", and essentially, these walls are being made out of big cages with rocks put inside them to hold back fill that's being done down by Sarasota Bay. I have several exhibits, and all of these have been taken from an environmental assessment report prepared by Monaco Ecology Group for Aqua by the Bay, and this was dated December 11th of 2023, so less than a month ago. I need the, I need the camera. Okay. Exhibit one, again, taken from that ecology report, shows that Gabian walls are being proposed as part of the application for this next phase of Aqua by the Bay. This, this rock-filled cage is demonstrated in in Exhibit Two. This is a part of the, or this is a cave, this is a wall that's at the, that ends at the southern end of the proposed project, and then this next wall will be extended. Now, the developers make no bones about it. They're going to have impacts into the wetlands area. But the worst part about it is that they make no bones about the fact. Excuse me. They make no bones about the fact that no buffers are being proposed. That is zero feet of buffers. This is what happens when you let the state take control of the buffers. Exhibit Five, again, taken from that same report, has some really confusing language in it. But it clearly indicates that if you don't have the wall, this Gabian wall, they're going to have to go 25 to 50 feet into the wetlands themselves. Now, I mean, why are we even talking about impacts onto the wetlands? We need to be preserving the wetlands, not just the wetlands, but also the buffers. Again, this project proposes zero feet of buffers. Now, in Exhibit Six, we see the reason why we need the Gabian wall.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments. That is the end of the folks that signed up to speak. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to come forward and speak on any future agenda item?
Morning, Mr. Chairman, Joe McFlash, Manatee County resident. Congratulations on your chairmanship. I wish you the best of luck this year.
Thank you, sir.
Follow-up on what Ken was talking about. So SWF MUD did receive this application from Cargo slash Carlos Beruf, and it says that there is not going to be a 25-foot buffer on the average, and this is something that this board did consider. My request is that you have your staff make some comments reflective of what you thought. Maybe that SWF MUD was going to permit, and it's still time for that. This is an application, so it's important. Here's a picture that kind of clearly shows, if you want to zoom in a little bit more, as far as the buffer is not there. As far as the wall is right on the wetlands, the upland side of it, you know? And it's just common sense that you need to have a buffer. This next one, confuse it with a Gabian wall. That's the buffer that you required already on Long Bar Point, Aqua, 50-foot buffer, sloping. Why this is important is because of sea sea level rise. If you don't have a buffer, and as the sea level rises, you lose the mangrove shoreline. And I think, Kevin, you got an email from Dr. Dave Tomosco from Sarasota Estuary. So all I could tell you, 22 years as a county commissioner, what we used to do, and I encourage you to do the same, is have a work session. Let's bring in the experts, and let's not have a meeting where we're on different sides. Let's have a cooperative meeting, you know? Because a lot of times, when you're in a regulatory mode, it becomes tense. So what I'm asking you to do within the next few months is call in the stakeholders. Let us have an opportunity to present, call in Sarasota Bay Estuary Program, as well as Tampa Bay. We could even call in Charlotte. We're one of the only counties probably in the whole country that has three estuary programs, three directors, three scientific people. And as you know, they don't get into the politics of it. They're just there to give you the science. So what does it hurt? Let's start the year off right, you know? Let's not hold grudges on the past, you know, and call names. You know, this is a new day, new chairman and new board. And so all I'm asking is that you respectfully allow the stakeholders to be part of the decision-making process. It's not that difficult. It's what we used to do. It's what made this county the greatest county at one time. Let's get back to that, you know? I'm not going to get into any of the other issues. They're outstanding, but this is a unique opportunity because while you approve your amendments for the comprehensive plan, they haven't taken effect yet because it was challenged. And so you do have the ability to rescind that action at any time you feel it's worthy to rescind the action.
Thank you, sir.
That I would encourage.
I appreciate your comments. Thank you.
Can I get also a response maybe from you, Mr. Chairman, whether you would even consider having this?
We'll take it under advisement, and I'll get with the county administrator. Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to come forward? If not, we'll close citizens' comments and go to citizens' comments. Any of the, would you like to respond to any of the presentations I've ever made? Any questions?
I put myself on the board.
Yeah, I'm going to get David up here, I don't know why I'm not showing you. Commissioner Cruz?
Yeah, I was going to say, going to what Ken and Joe said was, I mean, just remember, when we were asked about this wetland, we had a consultant flat-out tell us, people on this board, point-blank asked, "Hey, we're going from 50 feet to 25, we're still going to have a buffer." This was an actual question by somebody on this board. "Are we still going to have a buffer?" "Yes, we are still going to have a buffer. We are going to have 15 feet minimum, 25-foot average." This is what we were told. We we made a decision on this board based upon information provided to us. It's just simply not true. I mean, and this is proof of concept, it's not true. This hasn't been decided yet. It's, as Joe said, it's still an appeal, so we can still reconsider. But just like with with some other policies we discussed, I I believe this policy was voted on based upon misinformation. We were told there would be a minimum buffer. This is proof right here. The very first application proposing to use that vote is not having any buffer. It's having zero buffer because what we approved was not a minimum adjustment to a minimum buffer. We approved the state deciding whatever it wants, however it wants. And this is going through SWF MUD. SWF MUD are not scientists. SWF MUD are appointed people on a board who make these decisions. So the, I, this is, to me, this is just verifiable proof that that was a mistake with misinformation. I I agree, we should have a further conversation on it before this goes into a complan, and we see more of this, because I don't believe everyone on this board thought they were voting for zero-foot buffer because some of you point-blank said you were comfortable with it because there was still a buffer, and there is not. This is an application with zero buffer. So I I think we should have a bigger discussion on that before we make a a big mistake once again in our complan.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments from the board? All right, thank you very much. Next up is citizen comments that would be on consent agenda items only. If anyone is interested in coming forward to speak on consent agenda items only. Seeing none, we'll move forward.
For the record, Glenn Gadfly Gibellina. So there's several items, and you should have a record of this. Item 49, 55, 63, 65, 66, 67, and you, I'll take up the whole 10 minutes for the record. So let's talk about item 49, which is the speed bumps, right? So you want to put in temporary speed bumps without any signatures. You want to place these things without even getting the okay. There's 100 feet minimum of mandatory housing. You have to ask those folks if they want that speed table in there. You have no documentation. You want to move forward without it, without any signatures. It took me nine years to get my speed bumps. You know why? Because I got the signatures. They had to get verified by the by the tax appraiser. I don't see any any list of signatures, not even the eight or 16 that you need by the speed bumps. But your staff wants to move forward, even though this is probably illegal. I see the, I wrote the attorney last night, he hasn't responded. I had to go through it. I don't know why these folks, because they live in a richer neighborhood, thinking, "Just throw in temporary speed bumps and we'll see." throw in temporary speed bumps and we'll see how it is, without any signatures. That's not the process. Let's talk about item, I asked for 10 minutes. I asked for, so the speed bumps are a problem.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to clarify for Mr. Gibellina. He gets three minutes per item to, for a maximum of 10 minutes total. Okay, thank you.
Well, you just keep banging three minutes for 10 minutes. I mean, I don't know how you're gonna do that, but that's all right. Let's talk about number 55, the paddocks. You're going to give them, there's 10% of affordable housing. Well, 26 to 264 is not percent. It's less than 10%, right? So they're gonna go a minimum 10% related to workforce housing. This shall be endured by a LORA land use agreement. I don't see the LORA. They don't say if it's from 30 MI to 120. No paperwork on the LORA. And what happened to Resolution R. 22158? That has to do with affordable housing, right? It said, shall be 30 years, shall be a minimum of 25%. That was, that was signed by KVO. Why are we just doing 10% and doing, and making, making the higher density? One, there's no, there's not a LORA that is attached to this proposal. So I would like an answer from the paddocks, if that's possible, of why they're not, they're not following the incentives that we, that we allow through Resolution 22158. See, that's a confusing thing, too.
Agenda's out there. I mean, it's been out there, so I mean, it's, it's on regular, as a regular item.
Is number, is number 63 on the consent? No. Well, when do I get to talk about those? When do I get to?
When they come up on the agenda, and we, because those will be, it's 63 is what you're talking about, right?
Yeah.
It's under regular agenda item.
Oh, we're not, so we're not doing that now, regular agenda item?
Nope. This is on consent, this is only what's on consent agenda items only.
And what numbers are those?
It goes from 55.
Yep.
From 55. Oh, up to 55. Oh, I made it under the wire. All right. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Good morning.
Yes, sir. Can you state your name and county residence?
Yeah, absolutely.
You have three minutes, sir.
Justin Surratt, Gulfport, Florida, Pinellas County. Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. I'm the Director of Business Development for Amoresco, here to comment on item 16, the Lena Road Landfill Gas Project. By way of background and some appreciation for Manatee County facilities and my personal ties, I was married at the Powell-Crosley Estate to a former Manatee High Valley Victorian, whose family's been in the area for many generations. So as you might imagine, I've spent a lot of time here in your community. Today, I'm with my colleagues to comment on the landfill gas project, specifically the procurement timeline and selection process. All of the following information is known and has been provided to the county during the selection process, with the exception of possibly new information related to the federal tax credit and its eligibility to your project, beginning with that. In my hand and here is an IRS document published November of '23 that provides the following clear guidance stating the ineligibility of biogas project tax credit, and it reads as follows. "Equipment necessary to concentrate gas and necessary for the injection into a pipeline is not qualified as biogas property." Essentially, the tax credit is not available for the current intended purposes, and it appears at a previous board meetings that this benefit was driving a relatively expedited process. Second, to summarize our understanding of some recent events related to this project, November 14th, 2023 Board Meeting, the board voted to reject the contract with Johnson Controls and negotiate with Amoresco for what it appeared to be the following concerns: environmental fines with the state of Florida, SEC fines related to violations overseas, and lastly, for concerns over status as a foreign-owned company. December 5th, while we were under in the intent to negotiate, which was our last correspondence with the county, we were attempting to negotiate this contract in good faith with staff, and we were notified at that time by email that our contract would not be taken to the board in December, but instead taken up in January. By email, we asked if our team should cancel plans to attend the 1212 meeting, and by email, the response was, and I quote, "Yes, the program item will not be on the December 12th agenda." So hopefully you can understand and imagine our surprise when the item came up during the December 12th meeting while we were under our negotiation notice for that project. At the December 12th Board Meeting, Johnson was asked at the public meeting to respond and satisfy some of the concerns brought up at the November meeting that led to the initial rejection of the contract. The board elected to then reverse course, and we were notified that our negotiations had ended, which was the last communication that we had received from the county. My last topic and some highlights of, of our firm's Amoresco's qualifications, just as quick reminders, and again, all of this is available as part of the competitive selection process. We're a publicly traded U.S. company, based both operationally and for corporate tax purposes here in the United States. We have the leading global team in our biogas division of over 145 in-house professionals that only do this type of work related to the Lena Gas Project, and that is the most of any energy services company. So doing the math, that's 10% of our company that's dedicated to doing this specific type of work. And lastly, we don't rely upon any third parties to help supplement our experience or qualifications when it comes to competitive solicitations. So in summary, we believe that partnering with the most qualified and experienced company in the world to do this type of a project is what the taxpayers and residents of Manatee County deserve, and we appreciate your consideration, and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, sir. Yes, ma'am. State your name, county residence, and you have three minutes.
Sheila Burkholder, Livingston County, Michigan. Hello, my name is Sheila Burkholder, and I am Amoresco's Director of Biogas Development. I'm speaking to consent agenda item number 16 on the Lena Road landfill project. I have over 30 years of landfill gas development experience, and throughout my career, I've developed 42 landfill gas beneficial use projects, including five for Florida municipalities, including Sarasota County right next door. If Amoresco's awarded this project, I will be personally responsible for the project, every aspect from the start through operations. On December 12th, the Johnson Controls executives stated, "Another bidder has been sold three times in the last six years, and the reason we were selected is because we are stable." He was not referring to Amoresco. We've never been sold, and respectfully, stability is not one of the scoring categories. But if it were, Amoresco would be superior by any measure relevant to the project, as we're the only biogas developer in the industry that has not bought into, consolidated, or entered the industry through other ways. We've developed every single project ourselves. In that same meeting, Commissioner Baird inquired as to the basis of difference, difference in the scoring, stating, "I want to have a good feeling on who I decide to pick based on information being presented to me at all times, and I'd like to know what the other two have to say." Well, respectfully, Amoresco is also unclear as the scoring, especially the disparity in light of the fact that it was a request for qualifications, and Amoresco is by far the most qualified. Amoresco has organically developed all 38 biogas conversion projects over the last 23 years. We did not acquire any projects, and we haven't sold any, and we've only been able to find one landfill gas conversion project that Johnson Controls was involved with. We did a quick comparison to look at side-by-side, and you can see the number of biogas projects developed, 38 versus one, the number of renewable natural gas projects developed from scratch, Amoresco has six, Johnson Controls has zero, the number of internal staff dedicated solely to landfill gas development, 145 at Amoresco, were unclear as to the competition. The number of projects acquired or sold, Amoresco has none, and many of the other bidders have 100% of their projects acquired. Amoresco is also a member of the Natural Gas Coalition, which has 337 members, and Johnson Controls is not. And so the score confounds us. The evaluation committee used four categories to evaluate: experience, approach, structure and capacity, and similar projects, each worth 25 points. We placed, when placed in comparison, we simply believe there must be a mistake. Our 20-minute interview in August resulted in the committee increasing our score by 11 points. However, we believe that we were underscored by at least 25, and that our competition was overscored by 20. Respectfully, the categories of experience and similar projects.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Good morning, sir. Please state your name and county residence, and you have three minutes.
Good morning. Jeff Stander from Oakland County, Michigan. My name is Jeff Stander, and I'm also speaking to agenda item 16. I'm the Vice President of Sustainable Energy Asset Development at Amoresco. I've been developing landfill gas projects for, since 1998, and 22 years for Amoresco. I'll be addressing scoring categories of approach and organizational structure and capacity. I will also address a few important contextual points of fact. Amoresco was very detailed in our technical approach, and our commercial approach was very simple. On this slide on the top, the first statement we made in the approach section noted a key Florida statute, contracting statute. Quote, "Energy, water, and wastewater savings includes any other measure which is designed to enhance revenues," period. We propose to baseline revenues, which are currently zero, and then guarantee a cash flow from the project. In our interview, we sensed that the committee may not have been in total agreement with our assertion, a sense that was reinforced by our continued low score. However, we were pleased to learn on November 16th that the county attorney agreed with our interpretation. Possibly, our scorecard was never adjusted to reflect a legally verified and accurate approach. Organizational structure and capacity, as stated, merging two drastically different projects into one RFQ, plus limiting the response to 14 pages, was a challenge. We suspect our message was lost and maybe took for granted that our extensive display of in-house dedicated personnel would clearly demonstrate our ability to deliver. We did make it clear that we had resources in-house, local subcontracting would be prioritized, and we did not rely on a JV or a third-party team member. Let me address a couple points of fact. This project will cost at least $50 million. We have built and are building several of these projects. We can take you to them. Two, the key economic driver for this project is not a tax credit. It is the federal renewable fuel standard, which requires oil refiners to generate a minimum volume of their production from renewable fuels. Three, we have provided a gas contract between Amoresco and Volusia County, who also did not want any risk, and applying that royalty structure to the Manatee gas flows would generate the county no less than $800,000 a year, depending on the county's risk appetite. Number four, the audit agreement you are voting on today has a price tag of over $1 million. To determine the project feasibility with an unknown value to the county, Amoresco was prepared to deliver these answers for $184,000, because our learning curve is behind us. The county has the time to be certain in this decision. Take it. Take the time to visit our projects, then do the same with the other bidders, and investigate the depth of all the bidder's claims. Time is money, and this procurement effort can still be used as a path forward. We simply urge you to take this newly discovered time and make the best choice.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning. Commissioners.
Your residence, and you have three minutes. Thank you, sir.
My name is Derek Hatch. I appreciate counsel, administrator, all you, all you do. I live in Collier County, but work from Tampa down through 10,000 Islands. I'm here to speak on agenda item 16 as well, for some of the reasons stated. I asked the board to reconsider the agenda item and the decision. As was stated, there's no need to expedite. Manatee County needs a company that specializes in natural gas, landfill gas beneficial use, as it's extremely complicated, not a company that subcontracts it out, but a company that specializes in it. And we, again, Derek Hatch, wish that you will reconsider the decision. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I think you pretty much know his name. Your residence in three minutes.
Yeah. Sam Troyer, Lake County, Florida. Here as a representative of Amoresco, also here to speak on agenda item 16. Respectfully, a request that you reconsider, at least look at the item. There's, there's, the timeframe that is required for you guys to pass this in the consent agenda is no longer relevant, so we ask that you reconsider, and that we believe that the citizens of Manatee County deserve to align with an organization that has landfill gas experience. So thank you. I'm here as a representative, again, work from Tampa down to 10,000 Islands as well, so local for Amoresco. Thank you for your time.
Good morning. Chuck McGinnis, resident of Collier County, and.
Tom Lyons.
I mean, you can only have one speaker at a time.
Okay.
So if the gentleman would like to speak after you, that's fine.
Thank you.
And.
We'll, we'll be brief. First off, congratulations, Chairman, on your, and the board on your 2024 leadership appointments, and thank you for the opportunity to speak today. We thank you for the opportunity to be considered for this project, and we view it as a very, very important project. I brought along Tom Lyons, who will be introducing himself, and to speak to the investment tax credit and various details related to the renewable nat, natural gas project.
All right. Hang on for a second. His three minutes, now he gets to do three minutes? Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Reset the clock, please. Name and county residence.
Yeah, hi. Good morning. Tom Lyons. I'm from Fairfield, Connecticut. Pleasure to be here. My background, I have 33 years of development experience in waste and biogas to energy. I've developed over $4 billion worth of project over that 30-year period. I wanted to address two things today. One is the ITC. Number one is that the US EPA and the IRS actually issued a opinion memorandum in November that actually curtailed certain eligibility of gas conditioning equipment. The trade associate, the RNG Trade Association, as well as several other, or most of the market participants are engaged with the US EPA and the IRS to basically overturn that and restate, restate the eligibility of that equipment. The expectation and, is that that would, has a high degree of potential to be reinstated in Q2 of this year, and there potentially is no relief on the November timeline to be in the ground of this year. So it would be a high risk for the county not to continue to move forward based on what everybody in the industry believes will come to fruition this year. And number two, if successful and awarded this project, I will be the lead development person, both commercially and technically. I've got years of experience in doing this. Our partner here is a company called Mead and Hunt. Mead and Hunt has over 30 successfully operating biogas to RNG projects in service in North America, and we would be happy to, you know, provide the county an opportunity to visit those and our facilities here in North America.
Is there anyone else who'd like to come forward and speak?
Good morning. My name is Thomas Martin. I'm a Vice President of Amoresco. I'm also, I live in Manatee County. I was so impressed by Manatee County driving through a couple years ago, my wife and I decided to build a house off a golf course drive. So my trash is collected by Manatee County and goes into Manatee County landfills. The county, they can't make a quick decision, hoping that it turns out the way you'd like it to. I'll put it this way, I'm not going to go through a whole lot of technical details. But if you, if you have trouble with your heart, you go to a cardiologist. If you need your taxes done correctly, you go to a CPA. If you need a landfill gas system in plant, designed, built, and operational, you go to the land gas company that it's made its living doing such facilities. So again, if the board would please reconsider in regards to Amoresco and our qualifications and all the details that it provided, we would greatly appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mark Goff, Manatee County. I'm the Area Installation Manager for John's Control Southeast USA. I also have overseen the installation of an AMI and biogas facility in the city of Evansville, Indiana, which we spent about two years developing and getting installed, and it's very successful, twin 250 KW biogas engines on that project. My team and myself will be overseeing the installation of both the AMI project and biogas projects that are being proposed for this project as well. So we just appreciate you considering us for this project, and we look forward to working for you in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to come and speak on a consent agenda item? Seeing none, I'd like to see if we can get a motion to approve consent.
I don't like motions approved.
One second.
Thank you. Commissioner Cruz. Minus 40, sorry, minus 44.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I can't find it.
With the chair's permission, I'd just like to ask Evan, the basic assertion was made that this other company can, for $187,000, do what's about to cost us $1 million. That's a, I'd like to have someone who's neutral tell me that is not the full picture before I vote.
Yes, sir.
Consent, sir.
What's that? Well, it's 16 on consent. I could also pull it from consent if you prefer, Mr. Chair. But if he gives, it's a simple answer, I'll...
Evan, go ahead.
So for the record, Evan Piluchowski, Deputy County Administrator. Yes, to your question, there's a bit of an apples to oranges between proposals. I do want to just reinforce the fact that this is not the award of the construction of anything. This is an energy audit, so that we can go in and work with a company to make sure that there is the, a viable way to actually deliver one of these projects. If there's not, the county is on the hook for no money. So in the end, it's really, we want to make sure that whatever proposal we select and move forward with, we're going to have the answers and the information we need. They have different approaches, there's different costs, but we felt, and the selection committee that went through the process, felt that the best proposal and the best qualified firm to deliver that was JCI for the renewable natural gas project.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You good?
I mean, I'm not excited.
We have a motion to approve consent by Commissioner Cruz and a second by Commissioner Ballard. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Chair says aye, motion carries seven to zero. Thank you very much. With that, I would, we usually have a 10:30 break, so what I'd like to do is call recess for about, for 10 minutes. Thank you very much. We'll be back in 10 minutes.
I'd like to call the County Commissioner meeting back into order, please. Thank you. We're going to go forward and address item forty-four that was pulled by Commissioner Van Austin Bridge. Sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Item forty-four, essentially, it raises, it's from MSO, and it raises the pay scale for off-duty officers from forty dollars an hour to sixty dollars an hour. There really wasn't any supporting documentation. I asked staff during my briefing, you know, it's a fifty percent increase in pay. I don't mind paying people what they're, what they're due, but it's a fifty percent increase in pay, and there was literally no supporting documentation to go along with it. And I didn't know if anybody else had similar experiences in their briefings, if anyone else had any questions. My only thought would be, you know, could this be something that we should continue and ask for some information before we move forward and pass it? So I was looking for really discussion more than anything.
May I offer a quick clarification as well? Sorry. So Courtney DePaul, Deputy County Administrator. Just a quick clarification. So we did reach out to the MSO when we found out that the item was pulled. I think we may have, like, just notified them a couple of minutes ago if we did, so they probably won't have a chance to come over here. So I think probably a continuance might be a good thing. Just a quick clarification. This interlocal, our interlocal with the MSO for this community policing initiative, it expired on September thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-three. So this would be renewing the interlocal. The rates increased, they were forty dollars an hour, they actually increased to fifty dollars an hour effective January first of twenty-three, and then they were increased again as part of this interlocal to sixty dollars an hour. I don't think we ever updated the interlocal to the fifty dollars. So this was a jump from forty dollars an hour to sixty dollars an hour for those off-duty police officers.
But to be clear, are we, are we voting on an interlocal, on the interlocal?
The, the voting is for the interlocal, which includes the rate change from forty to sixty dollars an hour.
Was the interlocal attached?
The interlocal is the, yes, it's, it's attached, and it's been reviewed by the, by the county attorney's office.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Ballard?
So I, I also did, did see that big difference, and I thought, wow, that's a, that's, that's a, that's a great, that's a great rate that they're, that they're getting there. So I, I would not be opposed to continuing it to get a little bit more information.
All right. Commissioner Van Austin Bridge, do you want to make, do you want to make a motion for a continuance?
Yeah, I don't mind making a motion for continuance. It doesn't sound like it's, I mean, since September twenty-two or twenty-one, I don't think it's, there's a lot of urgency to this item. I don't think it's a, a big deal to continue it, get more information from the sheriff, and then bring it forward again. So I'll make a motion to continue item forty-four.
I'll second.
Thank you. Can you, can you move it on the screen for me? Thank you very much. We've got a motion to continue the interlocal agreement, item forty-four, community policing by Commissioner Van Austin Bridge, and seconded by Commissioner Ballard. All those ready to vote, or please vote now?
Need to call for public comments.
Oh, sorry. Can I have a public comment? Is there anybody that would like to give a public comment on item forty-four and its continuance? Motion to continue. Seeing none? Everyone, everyone, please cast your votes. Cast the votes. And the motion to continue carries seven to zero. Thank you very much. Thank you, Commissioner Van Austin Bridge. All right, moving forward. What I wanted to do real quick is to see if, being that we're getting, going to be close to lunchtime here, if we had any problem working through lunchtime based on that, what's going on with the storm and everything like that. There might have to be employees leaving and things like that to pick up kids and to get home. I'm hoping to be done by noon. So, huh? Okay, well, I'm just asking the board's opinion, you know? Okay, just, all right, we're gonna keep moving. All right. So there is no Port Authority meeting scheduled for today, and then now we're going to want to advertise public hearings, presentation upon request, Developmental Services, adoption of ordinance twenty-four oh five, FK ordinance twenty-two dash twelve, dissolution of Rye Ranch Community Development District. Is there anyone here on staff that'd like to speak towards that? Or does anyone want a presentation? Okay, no, thank you very much. Don't need staff then. Next item, the next couple items are quasi, so if...
We have to open that for public comment and vote on it.
Is there any public comment on dissolution of Rye Ranch Community Development District? Seeing none? Can you bring the motion up? Huh? Who signed up?
Here on behalf of the petitioner, just available for questions.
All right, please step forward, sir. Thank you. My screen's not moving fast enough. Are you sure for questions, or?
I am. Jared Earlywine with QTAC Rock here on behalf of the district and petitioner. So just available if you all had any questions.
All right, thank you very much, sir. We appreciate that. All right. The motion's been, the motion's been made by Commissioner Van Austin Bridge, seconded by Commissioner Ballard, and all those, please, if you'd vote now, on item fifty-six. Motion carries seven to zero. On item fifty-five, oh, sorry, the next two items are quasi, so if you plan to speak on item, on either fifty-five or fifty-six, they moved? Oh, I got the wrong one, huh? They gave me the wrong one. Okay, fifty-seven and fifty-eight? Okay. All right, so if we don't see one that'd like to speak, we're not going to swear anybody in.
Oh, no, we should, Mr. Chairman. Could we please, do you just go ahead and swear anybody who might need to speak, because there are two attorneys here and staff that may need to speak if the board has questions?
Okay.
So if the clerk could please conduct the swearing in.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Attorney. Item fifty-seven, execution of LDA eleven zero one, amended and restated local development agreement for the paddocks, PLN twenty-three oh seven, zero one nine two, quasi. Does anyone want a presentation? All right, thank you very much. Is there any public comment regarding item fifty-seven? Seeing none? And the motion's been made by Commissioner Turner and seconded by Commissioner Van Austin Bridge. If you could vote now, we appreciate it. And the motion carries seven to zero. Thank you very much. We're going to item fifty-eight, execution of LDA twenty-three zero three, land development agreement for Manatee Land Investors LLC, Water Cover Place, PLN twenty-three ten zero zero fifty-three. This is also quasi. Is there any public comment regarding item fifty-eight? Seeing none? And we have a motion by Commissioner Bearden, seconded by Commissioner Van Austin Bridge. Can we vote now? And the motion carries seven to zero. Thank you very much. Next item up is financial management, item fifty-eight, fifty-nine, adoption resolution R twenty-four zero one five regarding the infrastructure sales tax, diminish the project scope in the transportation category, and to add three projects to the public safety and law enforcement categories, adoption of budget amendment resolution B twenty-four zero forty-one. Is, anybody would like a presentation? All right, thank you. Is there anyone that has any public comment regarding item fifty-eight? All right, so, no, fifty-nine, sorry, fifty-nine? Seeing none? We have a motion by Commissioner Van Austin Bridge, seconded by Commissioner Ballard. If anyone could, please cast their votes. Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you very much. On item sixty, property management, adoption of resolution R twenty-four zero zero three, vacating certain platid easements in the plat of fairways at Conquistador subdivision, unit two, located at sixty-one zero six, Forty-Fifth Street West, Bradenton, Florida, three four two one zero. Is there anyone here, do we, anyone want a presentation? No, thank you. Anyone here for public comment? Nope. If we could, if we have a motion, motion made by Commissioner Van Austin Bridge, seconded by Commissioner Ballard, we can all vote at this time. The motion carries seven to zero. Public Works, item sixty-one, adoption of ordinance twenty-three one zero, one zero four, amending the speed limit zones on White Eagle Boulevard from State Road sixty-four to State Road seventy, and Thirty-third Street East from State Road seventy to Whitfield Avenue. Anyone want a presentation? Thank you. Anyone here to give public comment on item sixty-one? Seeing none? We have a motion by Commissioner Van Austin Bridge, seconded by Commissioner Bearden. We're going to all cast our votes now. Item carries seven to zero. On item sixty-two, adoption of ordinance twenty-four zero one, amending the no parking ordinance as set forth in Exhibit A, to create a parking restriction on Fifty-Fifth Avenue Drive East from Fifteenth Street East to a point six hundred feet east in Bradenton. Is there anyone, presentation, anyone want a presentation? Okay, thank you. Anyone here speaking for public comment? Nope. Thank you very much. If we have, and we have a motion by Commissioner Van Austin Bridge and seconded by Commissioner Bearden, if we could all vote at this time, and the motion carries seven to zero. And now moving into the regular section, Mr. Administrator, you're up.
Hello again. Good morning. Evan Piluchowski, Deputy County Administrator. Mr. Bishop and I are thrilled to present a candidate for the Utilities Director. I believe we have him on Zoom and can pull him up. Before we get into Mr. Shea's background, I do want to publicly thank Jim Rennerberg, who has been serving as the interim Utilities Director since July. Come on up, Jim. His, his hard work and dedication serving in this interim role, and also carrying out his duties as the chief utilities engineer for the county is just very greatly appreciated. We're so thrilled to have him in his permanent role and to have him continue to do the great work that matters here for the residents of Manatee County. With that, I do want to present Jim with a, a coin. This is the, the Manatee County Administration Challenge Coin. While it's just one small step away from a, a full ace coin, it does represent our deep appreciation and our gratitude for Jim and all his hard work in serving the residents of Manatee County. Thank you. So Patrick Shea comes to Manatee County with extensive utilities experience, as well as a long history of leading large public organizations, most recently as the general manager of the St. Paul Regional Water Service in Minnesota. This, this organization provides potable water to about half a million residents, and he has a Bachelor's of Science in Chemistry from St. Cloud State University and a Master's in Public Administration from the University of South Dakota. He has received numerous awards from American Water Works Association and others, and is also serving as the AWWA Director representing the Minnesota AWWA Section. We're thrilled to present such a thoughtful and accomplished leader to the Board for consideration for confirmation as the next Utilities Director for Manatee County, assuming he is confirmed. He intends to start on January twenty-ninth after escaping the cold north winds of the Minnesota winter. So with that, if there's any questions, happy to answer.
Nothing, we're good. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We have a, we have a motion to approve the appointment of Patrick Shea as Utilities Director by Commissioner Van Austin Bridge, seconded by Commissioner Cruz. Do we need public comment on this? Okay. Could we have any public comment regarding the appointment of Patrick Shea as Director of Utilities? Seeing none? The motion carries seven to zero. Welcome, Mr. Shea.
Well, thank you very much to the Board, the Commissioners, as well as the, the County Administrator and the deputies, to Jim Reiberg as well. Everybody has been extremely welcoming, understanding, and patient with my transition. I'm, I am very, very excited to, to join the team there. And on behalf of my family and myself, the residents and businesses of Manatee County are, are in our prayers in this upcoming storm, and hopefully it does not interfere with the county fair. I, I'm a little disappointed we will not be there to attend that event, but look forward to participating in that next January. So I'm available for any questions or, or comments, and my, my number one policy is, is always to have an open door and, and communicate as, as often and, and as many manner that the Board sees fit. So I look forward to meeting all of you if, if you, if you'll, if you'll have me. So thank you again very much.
Thank you, sir. Welcome aboard, and you can leave all your winter clothes up in Minnesota. You won't even down here. So thank you very much. Thank you, Evan. Appreciate it. Up next is our Public Works, item sixty-four, approval of an amendment to the twenty-twenty-four state legislative policy priorities and the county's twenty-twenty-four MPO project priorities. And I'm assuming Clark will be presenting on that.
Yes. Good morning. Thank you for the record. My name's Clark Davis. I'm Deputy Director of Traffic Management for Public Works, and this is a two-part agenda item. We'll be asking you to amend your state legislative priorities to include two additional road segments. Back in September, you included Fort Hammer Road, Fort Hammer Bridge, let's see, make sure I got them right, Forty-Fourth Avenue East and Moccaswell Wallow Road, what we're calling Segment Five, which is the connection east of three oh one to State Road sixty-two. Since then, we've found, sort of in a haphazard way, some sponsors for some additional projects. We think they make sense. One is for Fifty-first Street West, which was actually on your agenda last year and got partial funding, and then a new one for a PDNE study for State Road sixty-four in East County. This is an area of the county that's growing rapidly, and it, we're not quite there yet, but it won't be too far in the future. We'll need some additional capacity improvements, and, and the state seems to be on board with that one. So the first thing we'll be asking is for you to amend your priorities to include a request for State Road sixty-four for ten million dollars and for, I'm sorry, for one point two million dollars and for Fifty-first Street West for ten million dollars. And the difference there is for State Road sixty-four, this is just preliminary work, so it's PDNE and design-type work, whereas Fifty-first Street West, it's, it's for the balance of the funding needed to implement the project. The second part of today's request is for you to approve your twenty-twenty-four MPO project priorities. This list is important because it's where you get your quote-unquote MPO dollars. It's the federal funding that flows through state and metropolitan planning organization processes. These are projects that need to be consistent and on what the MPO calls their long-range transportation plan, cost feasible plan or project list. And we also add to that same list, because it shows regional support, all of our state legislative priorities. So if you were to look at that table, you would see a section down at the bottom that the MPO refers to as local jurisdictional priorities. They're not money that the MPO prioritizes, but having the MPO's support is beneficial for us when we make applications. So if we do follow through and make applications for, for Hammer Road or any of the big six projects, either at the state or federal level, having that endorsement at the MPO level is beneficial for us. I can stand for questions or go into more detail if you like, but that's sort of the overview of where we are with those two items. As for the Board's support.
County, they can be voted on as one item, correct?
I think I'd, I think I'd draft them as two motions, but it'll... Okay.
Okay. Commissioner Turner?
Hey, Clark, with the, the widening of State Road sixty-four, what's the, do we, can we anticipate what the state's participation is in that money? I guess the one point two upfront is from us, is it, or?
The one point two would be presumably paired with county funding or some sort of public-private partnership type funding, and it would be for, to the extent they need it, project development environmental, which is a preliminary study you need when federal dollars are, might ultimately be involved. And it'll go from east of Lorraine Road to Verna Bethany Road along State Road sixty-four, so it's about a seven and a half mile long segment, if I remember correctly. But it's about half of the money that, that could be needed for PDNE if it ends up being too much, or if they get money from other sources, it would roll into design. When we were in contact with FDOT representatives, they said that there were other potential sponsors for funding for that road segment, and so money may flow in from other directions. The state seems supportive. They recognize that, that emerging need there. So we hope we've set it up so that we do get some funding, and regardless of what flavor of funding it is, it'll have the flexibility for us to use on either this preliminary study that's required or roll over into the design phase that comes next.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Is that, is that it? Pretty much? Okay. Is there any public comment regarding item sixty-four? Seeing none? We have a motion by Commissioner Satcher, seconded by Commissioner Van Austin Bridge. All those will vote right now. Appreciate it. Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you very much.
All right.
Next up is item sixty-five, which is the adoption of resolution R twenty-four zero eighteen, establishing the county's roadway lighting policy and update on light-up Manatee program. And are you, are you still up?
Yes, sir. It's kind of a tag-team effort here. Again, for the record, Clark Davis, Public Works. This item is born from conversations that we've had with the Board over the last couple of years about lighting policy in Manatee County, and then even before we had the lighting policy in place, the Board took the initiative to start funding some lighting in the area. We have a presentation. We'd like to show you our proposed roadway lighting policy and ask you to act on that today, and then provide an update on the light-up Manatee program. And Aaron Burkett is here to assist.
Thank you, Clark. For the record, Aaron Burkett, Traffic Operations Division Manager, Public Works, here to bring for you again the roadway lighting conversation. As you know, we've had several conversations over the past several months and actually a couple of years. This is a culmination of that effort. We're trying to bring this conversation full circle by bringing to you a proposed policy for your consideration for adoption. Before we get into that, we would like to briefly recap our last presentation that we did in two thousand and twenty-three, then give you a quick overview of the lighting policy that we're proposing today, give you a brief update of where we're at with the light-up Manatee project, and then finally seek your approval. So as you recall, back in May last year, we brought a presentation before you. We tried to cover everything we could regarding roadway lighting. We talked about various lighting types, decorative lighting, standard lighting that you typically see with DOT projects. We talked about ownership, who owns them. County owns them, DOT owns them, HOA, CDDs. We talked about our current practices, what we do. How do we get lights installed on the road? Through CIP projects, developers install lighting, and we even saw some lighting in-house, very small projects, though. Some of those efforts are born through the MSBU process to get lighting along community roadways, and I think that's one of the biggest emphasis. We've, we've lacked lighting installations in local residential areas, and that's one of the biggest emphasis with the light-up Manatee project, which we'll be discussing a little bit. We talked about county maintaining lights. What lights do we maintain? We obviously maintain the lights that we own, those standard lights on the county maintained roadways, but we also maintain DOT lighting. We don't maintain the lighting for the cities. The cities handle that. We talked about the various technologies in roadway lighting. We talked about the old high-pressure sodium fixtures and up to the new LED fixtures that we're using today, more energy-efficient technology. We talked about switching systems, dimming systems, things that work and don't work in streetlights. And we also talked about emerging solar applications for roadway lighting pathways and parking lots. And we talked about the various funding mechanisms. How do we pay for the lights? Through capital projects, in-house, or MSBU mechanisms. And finally, we, well, almost finally, we talked about the reasons for lights. Why do we want the lights? Primarily for the thoroughfares, we're looking to install lights for safety, the road users, the drivers, pedestrians, cyclists, but we're also talking about security. We want the homeowners and property owners to feel secure in their own homes and their communities, and there's a huge emphasis right now to try and get more lighting in those areas. And we brought to you a basic framework of a policy, and I think that's where we're working from today. And from that, we were provided direction to bring back a policy to the Board. So with that, we'd like to talk about the policy and the framework and what it contains and doesn't contain.
And the policy was developed based on input from the Board during those discussions. It is, in some ways, a light policy because it doesn't overcommit the Board. It's understood that, that the lighting can be both a, a large capital expense and enduring operating expense. So it stops short of, say, mandating things, but it does set as a goal to try and provide lighting on the public roads in, in the unincorporated area of Manatee County. It differentiates between major roads and local residential streets. The needs for each are a little bit different. It talks a little bit about potential funding mechanisms and identifies some priority criteria that go into these things. And so the, the policy's only a couple of pages long, but to be clear about what it does and doesn't do, first covered by the policy is it says it's going to light the county-maintained public roads in the urban area. And there's, we have a slide later to show you what the urbanized area... And there's, we have a slide later to show you what the urbanized area is as it's defined today, but it relies on a document that gets amended from time to time, and it would be updated to reflect that. It differentiates, as I said, between major roads and local roads. With major roads, you're really worried about designed lighting systems. In other words, you want consistency and color uniformity and intensity of lighting along the roadway system so you don't run in and out of dark and light spots. For local roads, it's less about the design and more about getting some community support. You do want, of course, good coverage, but the need for the, say, the consistency isn't quite as high. And so you have some flexibility in how you can install lighting in those areas. The policy does require staff to consider lighting for new or reconstructed major roads. So as we bring capital projects to you for a road, any road project, we should also be coming with a recommendation as to whether or not we think lighting makes sense on that road. And we would also apply that when we negotiate with developers that build major roads as part of their projects, just the major roads, though, and I'll touch on that in a moment. It also allows for retrofitting lighting, so it's not only when we build a new road, we, if we look at an older road that may not need widening at all, we may be putting in a sidewalk if we think it's worthwhile looking at whether you put in some lighting, retrofitting it on that major road at the same time. And then it broadly identifies mechanisms for staff to bring forth proposed lighting projects. Because if you've set forth this goal, what staff would do with that is each year during budget and capital program development, we would bring forth what we call business cases or desired decision units for the board to consider. And this is the part where the board has, of course, discretion and necessarily so because the funding may not always be sufficient to do everything we want to do in a particular year. So you need to have that flexibility. So what the policy doesn't do is it doesn't make direct funding commitments, as I stated earlier. So it is not a promise to fund roadway lighting at a particular level every year. And it does not require lighting on the local roads in new development. I said a minute ago, we would, we would work with developers when they build a new thoroughfare segment, as we call it, or major road within their development, to add lighting on those. But it doesn't require it for the local streets. We feel that that would be more of a land development regulations requirement or something that we should put into standards and have vetted rather than put it in a policy like this. And then finally, it does not set a goal for lighting the rural area. But because what's rural today on the fringes of the suburban area may become suburbia tomorrow, it doesn't say you don't do it either. It just doesn't have the same goal to try and light the rural area that the policy does to light the urbanized area. And so that covers the policy. At the end, when, after we've gone through our light-up manatee update, we would ask for your approval of, or adoption of the policy in resolution form, or your feedback for us to take and make some updates to it to bring back to you at a future date. Aaron?
All right. Thank you, Clark. And I know we're all itching to hear more about the light-up manatee project. It is, it is a very large project. And we have, since we initiated this several months ago, we've been quite busy with it. So just wanted to give you a quick update of where we're at. As you recall, back in August, we were authorized to begin expending time and resources to begin setting up the program. On October 10th, we received funding to begin the initial rollout. And then later in October, we made it official by going live with the website. And I don't know if any of you have been to the website yet, but it's, contains a lot of information and it's constantly updated. Matter of fact, we just did some updates yesterday to it. So specifically, what have we done since we were, the program was funded? Immediately after that meeting, we were out in the lobby with FPL. We started work. We hit the ground running. We started coordinating with FPL and other providers to begin planning the projects and locations. We began using the website actively to communicate with the, with the public, providing information. And the website's been used as a tool to get excellent feedback from them as well. Obviously, the initial districts that we're focusing on are Districts Two, Three, and Four. District One and Five being coming shortly after that in future phases of the program. But for now, the obvious locations where we're focusing are county roads with little or no lighting, where we're experiencing higher levels of nighttime crash or crime rates, locations with condensed bus stop areas, transit stops, dead-end roads, intersections, and obviously, as Clark mentioned, locations basically confined within the urban boundary. So if you haven't been to the website yet, down at the bottom, there's the link. The website at the top, you'll see there's some, several buttons there where you can get updates or learn about the program. This is an interactive website. There's a button up there where you can click on and view the maps for local roads and a separate map for thoroughfare roads. And I'll show you that in a little bit. But it's got some frequently asked questions and a way to contact us in case you have any questions. But this is a great website. It's constantly updated with new information. And we'll be showing you a few more screenshots in a second. But we talked about priorities and how are we focusing and identifying the priority locations within those districts. And you probably remember these slides from a previous presentation. We've got information on our data on nighttime crash history, nighttime crime statistics from the sheriff's office. We've got school bus stop data, transit data that we can focus on to identify priority project locations, as well as the urbanized boundary map. And again, as Clark mentioned, this map is an older version of the map, which is due to be updated shortly. So again, going back to the prioritized areas, when we first started, the goal was to get lighting installed as quickly as possible. We wanted to see activity as soon as we could. So at that time, we had a few shovel-ready projects that we were already in design with FPNL. They were just waiting to be funded and initiated. A couple of those were prior MSBUs that we identified as MSBUs, but then we rolled them underneath this program as they fit the criteria. And there was another in-house project that we started in the Samset area on thoroughfare roads that we were going to execute in-house as well. That project had gotten shelved, and we took a look at that one and found that it also met the criteria of this program. And so we began working with FPL to execute that. And then with those shovel-ready projects in the works, we began identifying new locations where new lighting would be installed. And we identified 70 subdivisions across the three districts with the focus being on District Four first for the new locations. So when we go out to construction with the new planned locations, that's where we're going to start, and then the other districts will be close behind. So back to the website, here's a screenshot of that map that I was speaking to. This is the subdivision map. As you can see, this is interactive map. On the left side, there's buttons where you can focus in on the three districts that we're working in now. On the right side, it shows you the status of each of those project locations. There's proposed, shown there in gray. Red is currently under design. The yellow projects are under construction or soon to begin construction, and the green is complete. If you see, look at the top there, you'll see the Western New Washington area is done. And this is the thoroughfare view of the map. It shows the priority thoroughfares that we're focusing on right now. These are going to design. The top-right section, again, this is just updated recently to show in color code, so that way you'll have the kind of similar view. You can see the status of each of these. But right now, we're focusing on Samset thoroughfares, which is in the top-right quadrant there of those thoroughfare sections. So I encourage you to go to this website, check it out. It's, it's interactive, good information, and a good way to provide us feedback. So just to kind of roll up where we're at with the neighborhood roads. And again, this information is as of about three weeks ago when we created this, this presentation. Since then, we've identified more locations, more project sites. So the numbers are continually growing every week. So as of about a couple of weeks ago, we were at 760 lights, streetlight installations with FPL for neighborhood roads, 264 proposed solar locations, over 1,000 lights across 71 neighborhoods in the three districts. And right now, we've completed 63 installations in Western New Washington, and we've expended 62,000 with FPNL for the four projects, the Six, the New Washington, as well as the three other projects that show currently under construction. Roll up for the thoroughfare roads. We've identified over 1,000 streetlight installation locations across 21 thoroughfares. As you've seen from that map that I showed you a few minutes ago, that's going to culminate in a lot of lit-up roadways. And so you'll see drastic improvements. Right now, as we speak, FPL is currently working in Samset staking locations. We're going to start seeing light, that those roadways lit up here shortly, within the next few weeks, 230 streetlight installations within those, within those five thoroughfare segments in Samset. And for that project, we expended 56,700. And that's a drop in the bucket when you compare to the prices of a CIP. If we had to go out to design and do a traditional installation in-house, that would be a very expensive endeavor. So I think we're, we're getting a good deal there with FPL. It's going to be a good project. So with that, if you have any questions, I'll feel free to try and answer those for you, but we're seeking to request the board adopt the resolution for the proposed lighting policy. And I appreciate your time.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Satcher.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for the presentation. I think, you know, lower crime and safer streets is something we can all agree on is a great thing. So I'm glad we're moving towards that. It's been a great initiative, as far as I know, that you brought to our attention, Mr. Chair, so really appreciate that. And then I think at some point, we're going to be able to add Old Tampa in my district, just something about that, something about that road. It needs, it needs, you know, the light for, it's really dark and a lot of people walk that road. And so, you know, District One doesn't fit the description of the target for most of this, but there are places that are going to really benefit in the future, I know. So I appreciate it.
Thank you for coming, sir. I don't know if anyone saw the Bay News Nine report that was done about light-up manatee in Commissioner Ballard's district. And this one couple's been living on the street for like 30 years with no streetlights. And we put a street out, we put a streetlight, two of them on that street. And the lady that was interviewed said she thought she was, it was so luminous, she thought she was in heaven. So, and they said, you know, kids are out on the streets playing now and neighbors are outside. And that's just so important to creating community, is having that type of lighting out there. So it's a great project and staff's working hard on it. And thank you very much to our partners that are working on this with us. So on the adoption of Resolution R24-018, I have a motion by Commissioner Satcher, second by Commissioner Bearden. Is there any public comment regarding Resolution R24-018? Yes, ma'am?
Hi, I'm Shannon Keever, and I live in Bradenton. And I'm lucky enough that my neighborhood is pretty well-lit, but I definitely support this resolution. I think that safer and safer communities where people can feel okay being outside in the dark is a positive thing, and I thank you all for considering it.
Thank you, ma'am. With that, the, everybody's already voted, so the motion carries seven-zero. Thank you very much. And then we're moving on to Commissioner Agenda Items. Commissioner Cruz, you are up.
Yeah, I have three of them on here. They should be quick, so we can move them forward. They're, they're less about real action, more so than just directing staff. I've been talking to the staff about these three things, but before they really got into anything, I just wanted board approval to give them direction to move forward. The first one is about Armenti County search and rescue. Ironically, they're not here today because they're dealing with preparation for search and rescue. So the, the big thing there is I spoke with some of them at the parish Christmas event, and they were getting displaced from one of their facilities. Search and Rescue is an entirely volunteer nonprofit group. They get $0 of funding from Armenti County. They, they go out and work the Railroad Museum. They were just, when I talked to them at the Christmas, they were literally walking people back and forth across 301 for volunteer pay, just so they can help cover their costs. So I'd like to see if the county can do a little more for them. They're important. We mobilize them for Hurricane Ian in Maaca. They mobilize whenever there's an issue with Rabonia. Their immediate need is, they needed some, some permanent space. They don't have housing, per se. Fortunately, Parish Fire has kind of adopted them. And I worked with Mike Williamson over the break, and he was able to find them their immediate need space, but, but that's not going to be a permanent accommodation. So I know Courtney and Brian, some others have been speaking with them. Again, they're not here. John and them, all them aren't here to speak on it, but I just wanted to direct staff to continue this dialogue, see if there's some maybe surplus space we have or availability that we can give them a little more permanence and kind of just, if nothing else, a little bit of a thank you for, for everything they do volunteer-wise for Armenti County going forward.
Is staff currently working with them on trying to find them a spot?
Right now, Courtney, Brian, Jody are all starting. This literally came up during the Christmas thing a couple of weeks ago. So like I said, Parish Fire, Michael Williamson jumped on it to get them their immediate. They had to have some space by January 5th, which was prior to this meeting, so they took care of it. But we have been having preliminary conversations to see if there's something more we can do for them.
Yes, according to Paul, Deputy County Administrator, we've been working with John. I think the one thing that we still need, we understand what their total requirements are, but I think that's, we need to know what they need and not just what they want because we are struggling with finding all undercover storage. They need, they need one of their boats with, has rubber on it and it needs to be stored in a temperature-controlled indoor space. While that is a good thing, I don't know that we can accommodate all the other trucks that they have. I think they have like seven or eight pieces of huge equipment. So we'll work through it, but we can, we'll get that list from John. We'll work with them if the board wishes for us to do that, and then we'll continue. And, and we've even talked about the possibility of entering into a, a potential MOU with them and, and just kind of solidifying the space arrangement. But we're, it's really at the board's discretion.
So again, you got, you're currently working with them now, or?
We've been in very informal discussions about what their needs are.
Yeah, I told Courtney and Jody I put this on the agenda today, just so they know that the direction of the board is to continue having these, these conversations, they can bring something more formal back.
I mean, does that require a moat?
I don't know if it requires a motion as much as just a nod of a head, so they know they're not going to bring something back and the board say, what are you doing? We want nothing to do with search and rescue. It was a waste of their time and staff.
Makes sense to me. Yeah, I mean, I, I thought search and rescue was part of the county, so I mean...
It's not. It's, yeah. Search and rescue, and I wish they were here to explain it, so hopefully I'm doing them justice, but it's a volunteer organization. I think almost all of them, if not all of them, are also like work at the sheriff's office or are firefighters in their normal time. That's why John couldn't be here. I think he's only off on two days a week. He, I think he works on Longboat. But in any case, they're volunteer. They do not receive any funding from the county. The only, there are a couple of caveats with what they can and can't do certification-wise. And so I've actually been working with Jody on how can we help them get certified in certain areas so we can use them more. They are subject to, if they, if there's a declared event, they also can seek FEMA reimbursement, so they can get some of the funds for their time. But they are volunteer-based nonprofit. So hopefully that gives a little bit more insight.
Yeah, but right now, they literally work all the parish events just to cobble together money that the PCA and other parish organizations pay them, just so they can pay for their own supplies.
And according to them, I believe Sarasota County gives them $30,000 a year. I'm not sure, and I have not validated that.
I've heard the same thing, but again, I haven't validated.
Something, I did not validate it, so I don't know.
So this is not like the Cajun Navy that speeds around or anything? These guys are serious business.
Just a month ago, I was in the EOC, I think at 3:00 AM with John and with Jody, and they were helping us in Rabonia with potential...
Yes, sir, Ms. Administrator.
During Hurricane Ian, I had the pleasure of riding in the back of the, in the back of a deuce and a half with them. They did have like four deuce and a halves. They did high-water rescue. They rode through with loudspeaker in the back of Maaca, looking, helping us identify citizens that were trapped in their homes. We have met with John in the past. I, I think they're a valuable resource that we could utilize more.
All right. So the direction is there's no funding or anything? We just tell them, hey, talk to these, continue talking to search and rescue and come back at a later point.
Works for us.
My only request would be ease into this slowly. Like, if you come back with like millions of dollars or something, I'm not going to be amused.
Oh, no, that's not even remotely what we're talking. The main thing was they had...
This is a very slippery slope sometimes. That's why I'm like, let's, let's, let's ease into this.
First off, to her point, Sarasota's contribution is 30 grand. So we're talking small dog. And this really came up because most of their stuff is in the old fire department up in Parish next to, for, they had some, particularly one boat that had to be inside, that was in a different fire department from a different fire district. They were essentially getting booted from that. It had until January 5th to find accommodations. It had to be indoors with access. So that was an immediate need, which we've come up with an immediate Band-Aid for. But now the thing is, they don't have a place to call their own, where they can have a staff room, or they can have a, if they have more volunteers, anything where they can sit down and have some sort of class for it. They just wanted to see if there's anything we had that maybe we just have excess space They just wanted to see if there's anything we had that maybe we just have excess space someplace, that they can kind of call their own. You know, we see it with us, and I felt for them, because we have our EMS getting kicked out of fire departments. So I was like, you hate just getting kicked out. So that's where this conversation comes in.
So this is more of a direction item saying, hey?
Correct. Just so they know if they're putting the time...
Doing what you're doing type thing, and they're ready to bring something back? Is that the kind of idea?
Perfect. So if, I mean, we may not even go down the MOU direction. We've just been in preliminary discussions with John. So if it gets to that point, then we'll bring it. Anything that we have that needs board approval, we'll come back to the board. Funding or MOU or any of that.
Okay.
So, okay, thank you all.
Thank you.
My second one, number sixty-seven, at least on my form. I don't know your form says over there.
No, I'm sixty-seven now.
Okay. The second one's expansion of citizen advisory boards. This has come up by a number of people, both at my town halls and just in conversation. We have eighteen advisory boards from Manatee County. They're all volunteer. It costs us nothing other than a little bit of staff time, maybe some space up on the fifth floor for an hour. Some of those aren't even active right now. For instance, we're dealing with a lot of stuff with animal welfare. We have an animal welfare board. The last minutes from that board is February two thousand eleven. Or, sorry, two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-one. So there hasn't been minutes on it in three years. There's only six of the seven seats filled, and three of them have already expired. The other three are expired next thirty days. It's a vacant board. I looked at some other counties. We have eighteen boards right now, including the dormant ones. Sarasota has thirty-six, and they have over three hundred seats for citizens. We have four hundred thousand people here that are very smart, very knowledgeable. They care a lot about the county. So my discussion with Charlie and with others was, why don't we have more advisory boards? We have people that care about things here. We might as well be utilizing free service and volunteer advice and recommendations from the citizens of Manatee County. The four I put on the agenda that were specifically brought up, I'm not saying those are the right four, or if there's not more, were the animal welfare reinstating it. We're actively working on that, you know, with animal welfare. A waterways advisory board, which Sarasota has, so we can just look at what their resolution was for creation. A rural district board, just because we have a lot of ag and a lot of specific needs out there. Sarasota has one on the coastal side of theirs. And what was the fourth? Oh, the disabled persons, which Pat asked me about, Pat Simmons who's here. They have something similar in Sarasota as well. They have a seniors advisory board, and then they have a separate behavioral advisory board. So this is just an example. I just wanted, again, this, all three of my things are just staff direction, not specific votes, per se, to direct staff to look into opportunities for more advisory boards, look at best practices to better utilize our citizens' expertise and skills and passions for the betterment of Manatee County. And I included those four, because those were four that were specifically requested of me when I started talking about this. So again, no vote, just a general discussion of the board to make sure Charlie and his staff know that they're doing something that we approve of.
Mr. Administrator, is this something that falls under your guidance as far as establishing advisory boards? Or is it, or is it, I mean, how's the process move forward if we were to?
They have to be established by the board. I'm sorry to interrupt, but they serve as advisory boards to the board of county commissioners, and they are Sunshine Boards because of that. So there is some staffing responsibility to make sure that you have notice and taking minutes and providing public meeting space for them.
Okay, I mean, yeah, I mean, my only concern is, is that we do have some boards that we're having trouble filling. I mean, if there's people that want to step up, thank you very much. I mean, I've served on a lot of advisory boards. But that's, you know, my only concern is that we put these things out there and then, I mean, some of them don't even get recognized or filled. So that'd be, I mean, I would, I have a huge concern about if... Well, that's, we're doing that now, so. We're working on right now figuring out what boards that we're all on that aren't, some have sunsetted, and there's some that are out there that we, that we should be on that we don't even know that are out there. Because we haven't done anything in about the last five years with some of these boards or kept up with them that we should be appointed to or not even be on. So I would say, I don't, who's the direction it would go to, Mr. Administrator? If you wanted to look at increasing, are you going to go out and say, hey, look, these are the boards? We talked to Sarasota, we talked to other counties, and we feel comfortable, you know, bringing these back? This is something that citizens need? Or how does, I mean, I don't, you know, do we need to work on that, or?
What we're currently doing under Andy Butterfield and the DCAs is actually doing an audit on the eighteen boards.
Yeah.
Seeing, because again, I'm not aware of them all either myself.
Yeah.
Yes, it is. It's red. It's not working.
Do we know if there's a reason that our attendance is so low on these things compared with Sarasota, say?
We're doing a good job.
Yeah.
Could I?
Sure, it's a bit of dialogue, a bit of dialogue metaphor.
So I agree with Commissioner Ron that we have boards that are not currently being filled, which is concerning. So I kind of hesitate to open up all these new boards when we're not even filling the ones that, or we're having difficulty filling the ones that are already available for our citizens to sit on. I will say, you know, there are a few citizen boards that I'm a part of that are very effective and are excellent and, you know, that people are working extremely hard, long hours on a volunteer basis. But I'm also a little bit concerned about administrative burden and staff time with creation of new boards, because there are certain boards that require a huge amount of staff time and resources. So I worry that the expense of creating these new boards, administering them properly so that they comply with Sunshine could become quite expensive. That being said, I do like the idea of particularly a code enforcement board that could help people get into compliance with code enforcement in a more kind of friendly and gentle way before they go to a special magistrate. So I don't know if that's something we could potentially look at. But generally, I don't, I'm not hugely in favor of creating a whole bunch of new boards when we're having difficulty filling them. And I am worried about the expense.
I just don't want to create advisory boards just to create advisory boards. I mean, if we could come up with an idea of what kind of ones are desperately needed in our county to help our citizens, that's one thing. But I will echo Commissioner Ballard's comments. I sat on the PFAB board in Sarasota, which took a lot of staff time, because it was all about impact fees. And I sat on their ISLOC, which is comparable to our LMAC down there too, and that took a lot of staff time. So, I mean, I'm not opposed to necessarily adding, but I just want to make sure we're doing it the right way, the right boards, and we're not expanding or taking away staff time from other things. Mr. Administrator, you have anything to?
Yeah, hopefully my mic's working now. As I was alluding to earlier, we are going through an audit process right now. Andy's listening to the meeting. We're going to handle on the current eighteen advisory boards we have. Who's sitting on those boards, where the vacancies are? We're in the middle of that process right now. I can report back to the board next meeting where we landed with all that.
Okay. Mr. Satcher.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mostly just echoing or agreement, but then also maybe adding a little bit to the conversation that maybe the first thing we should do is look at some of these items and see if there's a board that already exists that could be added, either maybe perhaps added to the scope or at least added to an agenda. You know, you take, like, talking about code enforcement, well, there's the Public Safety Council. Maybe that could be an agenda item there. The animal welfare might be similar. Someone's, you know, concerned about crime or drugs or alcohol and drunk. Could add things to these board meetings, something like that. So that might cut down on having to add anything, because obviously I agree with everyone. I don't like adding more layers of government. I do like public input and getting solutions. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Van Osbridge?
Thank you, sir. I would just kind of echo Ballard, Ron, and I like a lot of what Commissioner Satcher said as well. You know, two of our top boards, LMAC has had a lot of people missing lately. I say lately, the last six months. And Planning Commission, we've had two people who's like our, these are like our top advisory boards, and it's hard to get full participation even there. Planning Commission, we have two people who have just come off of the board, essentially because they weren't really attending. So, yeah, I agree with basically what all three of you say.
Commissioner Cruz?
Yeah. Like I said, my thought was, there are people, I know you're saying every board is in full, but again, it's board-specific. It's not like, a lot of these boards are state statute mandated boards. It's not like someone would be like, I really want to be on a waterway board, but I guess I'll be on the Planning Commission instead because there's two seats free. It doesn't work that way. Or I'll be on that affordable housing board. One of the affordable housing board seats that keeps getting talked about by being empty, because I was on that board and we kept saying we didn't have that seat full, has to be on the Planning Commission. It's very specific. It's not open to general public a lot. That's not how these boards work. So I get not all the boards are going to be, are going to be overly well-attended. But again, we can either have a random mix match of people come in here and trying to speak three minutes or email us, or we can have like-minded people get together and formulate a real opinion on something, debate it and bring it to us in a more intelligent way. Like, some of these boards I recommend, like I said, the disabled person is something I've had people ask me about handicap accessibility on the trolley out on the island and our buses. We just put the mats out on the beach. I mean, there are things that we, none of us up here have that skill set or knowledge base, per se. And I don't know any of your backgrounds, but just looking at you, you know. But so it'd be nice to have five, seven people that actually are experiencing, how do I get out onto the sand of the beach? How do I get onto an MCAP bus? To be able to give us some best practice thoughts on it. Waterways, we're actively, Commissioner Van Osbridge is actively working on finding new locations for us and our boaters for boat ramps. I don't own a boat. I don't know best practice of how many boat ramps you need per person and where they should be, but there are a lot of people here in Manatee County that do. I wouldn't mind hearing their advice in one concise way, instead of hearing it twenty different times from twenty people. You know, same thing with mile marks. Someone just mentioned the markers out there. I don't know anything about markers. But there are people who know that. I guarantee some of these things, you're going to get passionate people who want to be on that board. And even if it's only a one- or two-year board, it's going to get us over a hurdle of figuring out our boat ramps. It's going to get us over a hurdle of finally shutting down Palmetto and moving the dogs over to Bishop with some best practices in terms of how volunteers should be structured and how that move should take place. And even if they're short-term boards, they don't have to go on Evergreen. But I do think there's passionate people here that keep talking to me, and I'd much rather get them all in a room, whether it's five of them, seven of them, thirteen of them, and then come and present a common thought, because I think that's going to help our board make some best decisions and best practices for the good of the public. And I think it's a nominal cost for a potential big gain. And any staff time we're, in theory, using on this or, you know, expending on this, I think is going to be made up on the lack of staff time that they're going to have to spin their own wheels trying to come up with the same things that this board can do on a volunteer basis.
Okay. Well, I mean, what, I think what we could do is we can direct the administrator, go through his study, and look at what Sarasota has and see what best practices down there of boards that they have. I mean, I don't want to add thirty-eight, I don't want to have thirty-eight boards. Yeah, I mean, I mean, they're already in the process. So, Mr. Administrator, could you go, you and Debbie Butterfield finish that up and then bring it back to us and say, look, these are things we should consider or not consider or whatever, and then we can go from there?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you very much.
We have one public.
Oh, we have a public comment? Yes, ma'am.
Pat Simmons, I live in Manatee County. And as you can tell, I have a communication disorder. This disabled citizen advisory board is important to me. And it's important to the people that are disabled in this community, including veterans, including parents who have kids in ESC in the schools, people who have had strokes or TPI or Parkinson's. It's, Commissioner Cruz is correct. We're the ones that are living with this day after day in this community. And I really do feel that we're the best ones to give, not only to educate the board, but to educate the community as a whole. That I often say, you know, walk a mile in my throat and see what it's like to have people ignore me, not give me job interviews, or try and finish my sentences or talk over me when all I'm trying to do is communicate a need. And I'm really impassioned about this. I'm really an advocate for not only people with communication disorders, aphasia. One of my heroes has kept me gathered, and she said, my, 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 it's a trial yard by yard. It's hard inch by inch, it's a cinch. Well, you guys are my first inch, and I would really hope that you considered this. I don't know about the other words that he's talking about, but I'm here to speak for people with disabilities. So thank you, and please consider letting us do this. Maybe if it's only for a year or two or ten, I don't care. We just need to come together. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate your comments. I think the direction is, is to direct County Administrator to go through your audit and then figure out, you know, look at how Sarasota's maybe a disabled persons board setup advisory board and, you know, that type, and go from that. But I guess that's where the direction is.
Not my direction.
Okay. Well, he's already doing the audit now, so we'll see what the audit produces. All right, Commissioner Cruz, Manatee County citizen, you want to speak? Okay.
Hi, I'm Shannon Keever, and I'm a Manatee County citizen. I, listening to the discussion on advisory boards, it makes sense that you don't want to just willy-nilly throw a bunch of, just, you know, okay, Sarasota's got thirty-six or whatever you said it was, thirty-something versus our eighteen, and so we need to have the same boards that they have. That's not necessarily the case, because Sarasota's not Manatee County. However, I want to address that. Part of the reason why you might not be seeing a ton of citizens jumping up to be on advisory board positions is because I think I can speak for the majority of Manatee County citizens in saying that we don't feel heard by you. There are times that you have had advisory boards give you advice and you don't take their advice. So, I mean, if you're going to expand advisory boards, then take their advice. Listen. Maybe also, I don't think that expanding some advisory boards is a bad idea, definitely, but hold some town halls, talk to your citizens, reach out to your constituents. The constituents feels like it's a waste of our time to come here and stand here and talk to you. So I can imagine that people aren't jumping to put in a ton of volunteer time if they're feeling like they're coming up against the board that's just going to ignore them. I heard somebody just this past week make a comment saying, if you're going to get on any advisory boards, make sure you're a Republican, because there's no way this board's going to appoint you unless you're a Republican. So this also means you need to be open to listening to people who think differently than you and acknowledging that there's people in this county that aren't you, that don't think exactly like you. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Cruz, yours? Oh, no citizen? Yes, sir. Please state your name and county residence for the record.
Keith Green, Manatee County. I just sat here and listened to all of what was said here, and my heart goes out to this lady here as well. Thank you. However, I believe that an audit... this lady here as well. Thank you. However, I believe that an audit must happen to kind of really verify things. So I agree completely that, you know, any more extra advisory boards would be just be more government, you know, getting in the way, in my opinion. So I think that it needs to be thoroughly looked at and just work with what's currently in the books right now. So yes, I agree that let the audit kind of, you know, take its course and to see what's the best move forward and to potentially just work with what's already currently in play. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there any more public comment with regards to Commissioner Cruz's item 167? Seeing none? Commissioner Cruz, your item 68, please.
Yeah, Manatee County used to have a citizens academy. A lot of counties have citizens academies. A lot of cities have citizens academies, even here within the the boundaries of our county. The Manatee Sheriff's Office has a citizens academy. It's they're fairly common. They used to, it used to exist in Manatee County. We stopped doing it. People have asked me why we stopped doing it, if we can bring it, if we can bring it back. We get 10,000 plus people a year moving here. I believe someone said 25,000 in the past two years. There's a lot of people who don't know how this government works, what the org chart looks like, how our utility systems work, what the benefits of our dam and our waterways, how the landfill is taken care of, how development services work of legislative versus quasi judicial. You know, I think it's it's important. I think that's why so many other counties and cities municipalities have utilized citizens academies. Some of us up here have gone through leadership Manatee. We understand the benefit of having a broad understanding of of the county you live in. So I just want to reinstate our citizens academy from Manatee County. We don't have it right now.
Lead Apollo, Community and Veteran Services. Thank you, Commissioner, for that. In fact, Debbie De Leon and her group are busy designing one now that we're going to roll out in 2024. We're calling it the Neighborhood Ambassador Academy. It's an eight week program. It goes over local government processes, programs and services. It's hybrid. So once a week on a Wednesday for about an hour and a half at the the new Lakewood Ranch Library, the group of 30 will meet and they'll have different folks from the county there to talk and and that sort of thing, different subjects and focused things. For example, the community emergency response teams would be a really good one, right? And get them in there and understand what those are about and especially target communities that that may not have that but could benefit from it. And then it starts on seven August and then it'll run through 25 September. So one in 2024. As we move forward with this, potential to do two a year beyond that. So I just wanted to provide you that update on where we're at.
All right.
You good, Commissioner Cruz?
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, moving on. Commissioner Satcher?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I brought this up a couple of times to give everyone a heads up. And I know that the county administrator is doing a more comprehensive look at all of our associations and making sure that the county is getting return on investment through the different programs that we're involved with. Nevertheless, I felt like we should just make it official and separate our connection with the American Library Association. You know, this is, they've elected a person and have stuck with them as their president that, these are quotes, "The consequences of decades of unchecked climate change, class war, white supremacy and imperialism have led us here. If we want a world that includes public goods like the library, we must organize our collective power and wield it." That's what she said after elected. And more, you know, things that just make it, you know, she's publicly says she's a Marxist. And that does not align with, I don't believe Manatee County taxpayers or this board. So I'd like to dissolve that relationship. And if at such time we want to review it because they make a U turn, that'd be great. But I don't support, I don't believe we should support with any type of association or definitely dues organizations that are pushing woke ideology under the guise of, you know, public good when all it does is harm people.
Yes, sir. I see Ms. Parrott's out there and the audience. Would you like to come forward and speak to this? And Mr. DePaula would like to come with you, too?
Good morning, everyone. Tammy Parrott, Library Services Manager. Is there a specific question that you would like me to address or just?
No, I'm just asking, I mean, I mean, we have, is it the membership we have with this association? I mean, apparently, the they've gone.
Thank you.
The comments made by and the philosophy now of this association is more leaning towards a Marxist type, you know, a very liberal type. And I thought they were kind of a bipartisan kind of organization that just kind of gave libraries, hey, this is best practices. But I guess that's not what it all is. And my understanding is we have an annual membership with them and and it comes up at some point this year?
That is correct. It we have a membership right now that expires May 31st.
Okay. So will we be renewing that membership with the American Library Association?
I would, before renewing that, I would take it to the library advisory board to discuss with them what they what direction they feel that we should take. Because as you say, our current president in the American Library Association has made some statements that reflect, I think, her personal views rather than more of a professional, nonpartisan view. And, you know, we've all belonged to organizations that we don't necessarily agree with the path the entire organization is taking. But and again, she is, that's a volunteer role and her term will expire May 31st as well.
Okay. What does the American Library Association supply to us? I mean, are we getting like tons of information from them? Or is it a group that we pay into and you go to a seminar once a year and they say thank you very much? And that's kind of it? I mean?
No, that's a very good question. We do get, I mean, in a very nuts and bolts kind of cash way, it's a very inexpensive membership. I can't remember offhand, but I think it's maybe $2,500 a year. And for that, we do get discounts on things like buying printing at four imprint or specialty items. We do have access to professional publications such as supervisory things, things that are very specific that our own internal HR team is not really prepared for because it is kind of a specialized organization. So they do have some publications in that way. And professional development. And that, you know, that can be a pretty broad term. But I will, an example of some professional development is that Lee and I were in conversation with a library that has gone to a mixed use process or building so that they would have multiple types of organizations and even residences in a library building, completely separate. It's, we can, you know, we can talk about it at the library advisory board, but it's very interesting. But that kind of professional connection would be curtailed by leaving the libraries, American Library Association, because I just wouldn't have the opportunity to learn or speak to those folks unless I do it on my own dime.
All right. Patricia Ballard, did you want to chime in or you look like you're getting ready to say something?
I can, I can add a couple of things. I've had a few conversations with with Tammy and library staff on the American Library Association. And my understanding was that, you know, they do provide some resources. They do provide some discounts that are, you know, that are nice to have when when the librarians go to conferences, et cetera, that they don't have a lot of impact on the the day to day operations of of library staff or, you know, how how they conduct themselves in in their work. That being said, we do have our Florida Association of Libraries, which we would still be a member of, were we to to leave the American Library Association. Additionally, the library staff would still have the ability to go to conferences hosted by the ALA, should they choose to do so, and find them worthwhile. But again, they wouldn't receive the the discounts that are available being a member of the of the ALA. And I think that some of the some of the things that Ms. Dabrowski has said publicly have been really unfortunate, have really damaged the reputation of the organization. And I don't think that she has made clear, I think that she's kind of done the opposite, that she, I don't, I don't think she's made clear that the things that she's saying are her personal views versus views of the organization. And that's, that's really my biggest concern is that she's, you know, placing those personal views into the way that the organization is is being run and is is being portrayed. And maybe the focus that that is being placed on on some of the trainings and things that are that are made available. I, I think it's a bit of a, a little bit of a mountain out of a molehill. Because I, like I said, I don't think that they have a big impact on on what our librarians do day to day. But I, I do definitely have concerns about about some of the leadership of the organization at this point.
I think I didn't mean to jump your head, but you sit on the library board. So the speaking orders, Cruz, Van Osterbridge and Satcher.
Yeah, I just don't care either way on this one. But we did, just to make, I'm not sure if this is a different agenda, but I know December 5th, we all received an email specifically telling us that staff already decided not to renew our membership as of May 31st. So this is kind of decided without, without this board, that the staff can make their own assumptions relative to what associations they feel best suits their needs. And staff determined not to renew this already a month ago. My only question is, again, I, I think Commissioner Ballard said it extremely well, this doesn't really dictate what we do. Our staff dictates what we do. The mindset of the board dictates what we do. The direction of policy dictates. This is just an organization. We're members of probably 50 organizations throughout this county. We don't agree with everything all of them say. There are people who sell houses. They're members of Realtor because they they get on the MLS. Doesn't mean they agree with the entire mission statement of it. It just, it gives them a benefit for themselves. So this, my only concern is, we do get, it was, the email said it was $1,440 a year. And we give no other money to them. It's not like we're like cutting them checks for 100 grand for a capital campaign. 1,400 bucks. Have we looked at the extent of the discounts and benefits we get out of this? To your point, we sent a couple of people to a conference or two. That's going, the discounts are probably more than $1,400. You know, are we running a risk because we're so scared of this mission statement or person who's any one year term and halfway through it, having an opinion that we feel is going to somehow like taint our library staff and not think our library staff are independently minded people who can make their own decision based upon the the mindset of a county and a policy direction of a board, that we're potentially going to risk spending thousands and thousands, if not tens of thousands of additional taxpayer dollars on additional printing costs and conference costs and travel costs out of spite? Or is this going to meaningfully cost taxpayers money and this county money, losing the benefits we get from it? The benefits that supersede ideology, they're just straight up, hey, we get, we have an opportunity for some grants, we have discounts on books, we have some best practices that have nothing to do with Republican, Democrat, conservative, liberal, just best practice doc, you know, documents and whatnot. Are we losing that? We looked into this of what are we giving up in exchange for $1,400? And are we doing this as a knee jerk reaction because it's kind of the way that the winds are blowing tonight? That's my only concern. Again, I don't care if a member or not, we were a member of a lot of associations. I don't care if we are or not. It's up to staff on whether or not it makes sense to do so. And I trust staff is going to be intelligent adults and not like show up and start drinking Kool-Aid in the middle of the woods in South America because because somebody was elected president for a year. I trust that you're going to do the right thing from Manatee County.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I think we actually have seen examples, I know that we have seen examples in our library system of staff making decisions. And I think they've all been, they've all been dealt with and corrected. And we stepped, the board stepped in, we had a workshop about this. There was some changes were made to the library board, policy changes were made. There was some direction given to staff by the previous administrator. And I think those things have been corrected. But how did we end up at that point would be the question, right? And I think pretty obviously, to some degree, it's the influence of these library associations and conferences that staff are going to led to some of those decisions, or at least in part led to some of those decisions. And so it's more than just the $1,400 a year. In addition to that, if we're dissolving our association, which is what Commissioner Satcher wants us to do with the ALA, I personally don't want staff attending ALA conferences. I'll pass on that, too. We don't need to send them off to be indoctrinated by the ALA. So I'm supportive of what Commissioner Satcher is trying to do. I think it's sort of like the one of the final steps in sort of getting the library system back on the rails when this board stepped in and started doing that several months ago. I think this is just one of the one of the final steps. And I think we're pretty much there. I think staff is often going in the right direction. This is one last sort of leadership thing that I think the board needs to do or policy thing that the board should do. And that's to get us out of the ALA. And it was mentioned earlier, maybe the ALA makes some changes and and realizes, you know, that they've sort of gone off course and and they make some corrections and pick new leadership. Sometimes people vote with their feet. And if this county leaves the ALA, I'm sure other counties have and probably will, and maybe some some of their membership votes with their feet and leaves, they make changes and perhaps we all come back. So that's ideally what I would like to see. But I am supportive of what Commissioner Satcher is trying to do. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Satcher?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I wanted to read, this was after her election as president of the organization. I just not, I just can, this is a direct quote, "I just cannot believe that a Marxist lesbian who believes that collective power is possible to build and can be wielded for a better world is the president-elect of ALA Library. I'm so excited for what we will do together. Solidarity!" Exclamation point. So I don't think that, once again, I don't think I'm looking for controversy. I would much rather there be no controversy involved with, you know, children learning to read and people having access to reading materials. But here it is brought to our door. I think it's a pretty, should be a real easy decision to move on. So I'd like to make a move that we direct staff to not attend any ALA hosted conferences, not renew our membership, and withdraw immediately from the American Library Association until such time that we are assured they're no longer pushing a woke agenda.
Second.
All right. There's been a first and a second. And we need to have public comment since we are making a motion on policy. I believe there's one speaker. Ms. Keever, you're up.
Hi again. I'm Shannon Keever, and I'm with Women's Voices of Southwest Florida, and I live in Manatee County. And I, I agree with Commissioner Cruz's comments that this just feels like it's a knee jerk reaction based on where the winds are blowing. I acknowledge that some of the things that the current president has said have been problematic. Some of the things you guys have said have been problematic, too. That doesn't mean that you guys shouldn't be commissioners. This is, I'm concerned for our librarians in professional development. I, I think it's really insulting to say that librarians are going to an ALA conference to be indoctrinated. These are professionals who've taken, I think it's like at least six years of education in order to become a librarian. It's a master's degree program, and you're acting like these are little children who are going to go off and can't think for themselves. That's ridiculous. It's just, it's very concerning to me that you are talking about leaving the American Library Association based on a president that you don't like, who is going to be leaving at the same time that our library association membership is going to be ending. It's just, if it's already been decided by staff, I don't understand how that works. If they've already decided it, then is this just a waste of our time and grandstanding to have the meeting about it? Or is this something you guys are going to be voting on? I'm a little confused on that, to be honest with you. I think that you have an expanded library board, advisory board, getting back to talking about the library advisory board. I remember how we were having that discussion a few minutes ago about how you should really listen to your library advisory board. So rather- ago about how you should really listen to your library advisory board? So, rather than vote on it right now, you should probably listen to them. The expansion of the library advisory board was a very good decision, given the growth that we've had here in Manatee County. I think this is actually kind of a ridiculous discussion that we're even having, and it's based on your own political ideology rather than concern for Manatee County citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. There's been a motion by Commissioner Satcher, a second by Commissioner Van Osta Bridge.
I have a question.
Yes, sir. Sorry. Commissioner Cruz?
Chris Ballard, how extensively has the library advisory board discussed this, like ALA and our membership and the conferences?
Sure. So, I believe that we did discuss this at the last, at the last library advisory board meeting. A formal recommendation was not made by the library advisory board. Nothing was voted on, but it was a topic of discussion. And I, I can't, I, I don't really think that I could give you like a flavor of, of what the board, what the board said as a whole. It was honestly a, a pretty quiet discussion. It was mostly Tammy and Lynn kind of providing that information to the board of, of what the ALA does and what our membership in the ALA actually provides to the county. There wasn't a whole lot of back and forth with board members, to my recollection. And Tammy, I'll let you speak if there's anything else.
Sure. Thank you. Because the membership is in force until May, and we have new board members coming on, we were waiting to have a more extensive conversation when we onboard the new board members.
Okay, so, we have a membership through May, anyway.
Correct.
And we have new board members coming on that this board is appointing.
Yes.
And we have an active advisory board who meets on a regular basis to discuss library items.
Yes.
But yet, we want to make a decision before a new library advisory board has an opportunity to opine on a decision being made. Yet, a few items ago, we just questioned why nobody wants to be on our advisory boards. I mean, what kind of conferences does ALA, does ALA conferences, is it inclusive of a, a webinar on how to use Hoopla and how to understand the basics of the, the newest Dewey Decimal System? Or is, or is it all, or is it all like full-on like indoctrination where you guys have to like dance around a fire?
I, I would say that there, there is very much a, a path for administrative and how to do things. Some of the best sessions I've been to are on types of building and construction projects and how to use project management tools for library goals. So, there's always, you know, you know, other types of sessions. And we do not go to the ALA conference. There's two conferences. Well, there's many conferences. We belong to ALA and we belong to PLA, which is a sub, a sub-organization within the American Library Association. And since we're a public library, we focus on the Public Library Association. You can't be a member of the PLA without being a member of the ALA. That's $115 a year to add on to the PLA. But that's where we go because we are focused on public service, and we go to sessions on expanding summer reading program reach and running book clubs and, and that kind of operational things. I mean, that's not the only thing. I don't want to be disingenuous about that, but that's where staff focus their time.
Ms. Parrott, real quick, do you get, do you get the same type of opportunities to attend stuff through the Florida Library Association?
Not to the same extent. It's the same type of things, but there will be thousands of people at a PLA and there'll be hundreds at an FLA.
All right. I think we've had enough conversation, and thank you, Ms. Parrott, for coming down. We had a motion by Commissioner Satcher and a second by Commissioner Van Osta Bridge. Ask everyone to cast your votes at this time. Everybody cast your votes. And the motion carries six to zero with Commissioner Bearden absent. So, there we go. All right. Next item, is there any comments from the county attorney?
No, sir.
County administrator?
Yes, sir. We need to give you a storm of data. Governor DeSantis just issued an executive order to include 49 counties under a state of emergency from severe weather impacting the state of Florida. However, while Manatee County is not included in that executive order, at this point, we are requesting to declare a local state of emergency for recovery purposes on the event that we do have damage. Jody has another call where we're trying to get into that 49 counties, but we probably need a local state of emergency.
So, you see, we seem to make that motion. How do you want to do that?
Mr. Chair, I'd defer to the county attorney. We declare a local state of emergency.
Second. That way, we can get resources from the state as well if needed.
All right. Thank you very much. There's been a motion and a second to declare a local state of emergency. All those in favor by, by voice vote, say aye.
Aye.
And there's none opposed. Do we need any public comment?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry about that. Can, is there any public comment about making a state of emergency in Manatee County?
I made a motion.
Ballard, second.
Thank you.
Seeing that there's no public comment, can we go ahead and vote on?
The vote is fine. You just needed to call for a public comment. It's okay.
All right. And a ver- the voice vote was fine?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. The motion carries. We are now in a local state of emergency. And Commissioner comments, District One?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just want to say, even though it was part of consent, I'm excited about all the local road projects that this board is supporting, and I really do appreciate it makes a difference. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. District Two?
I just wanted to remind everybody of the opening of the Lakewood Ranch Library on Friday, which we're very excited about, and also our Elwood Park Community Garden ribbon-cutting on Saturday morning at 10:00 a.m., which is also extremely, extremely exciting and gratifying.
Thank you, ma'am. District Three?
Yes, sir. I just want to thank Mr. Bishop and Carmine and everybody who's involved in the median work on Manatee Avenue. The medians are coming along. I think we're down to two left, literally one and a half. They're looking great, and hope to see everybody at the fair.
Yes, sir. Thank you. I'm District Four, real quick. If you've not had chances to drive up 41 and see our new Welcome to Manatee County sign, especially at night, it's pretty, it's pretty, it's really nice. So, it's, it was a change from what was there. Other than that, everybody stay safe, and thank you for being here today. District Five?
Yeah, just one quick update. TBRPC, they've just released the Regional Resiliency Summit for 2024 as May 9th and 10th, if, if anybody wanted to register for that. Should be pretty interesting.
Commissioner Cruz?
I'm good.
All right. Thank you. With that, we're adjourned.